Okay. That's so funny because every time you went in there, they handed you a coupon at the register. It's like, what's the point of this? Mark your prices down. What are we doing?
Ready to go.
Waiting for the.
It's now two thirty eight P M. And time for the regular meeting of Board of Directors of Georgetown Public Utility District. Can we have a bro call vote please?
Director Stovall.
President.
Director Saunders.
Here.
Director Burnborough.
Here.
Vice President Seaman.
Here.
Vice President McDonald.
Here. Alex. But President, excuse me, Director Stovall, you did such a good job in December. Would you care to lead us in?
I am a citizen of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time I would like to open the meeting to public comment on the adoption of the agenda.
I do have two changes, Mr. President, to the agenda that we proposed. We would like to propose pulling item number. Excuse me, eight. F, adoption of memorandum of understanding with local thirty nine. So we will table that until a later meeting. And I'd also like to propose moving agenda item six A sub bullet to. Directly after the consent calendar, if possible. We do have somebody in the room who was giving a presentation on cybersecurity. And in the interest of her driving a long distance, I would like her to be able to present as soon as possible so she can get back on the road.
Where would you like to put us?
In between four and five. So six A sub bullet in between four and five.
Okay.
And they do have a comment online. It looks like from Steve Pro.
Well, I have something.
But yeah, I'm just, I'm just saying, I just saw a hand raise. That's all I was.
I don't know how important this is as far as record keeping, but it has on the agenda. The committee is Tuesday. It's actually Thursday.
Yeah, that was a typo. We did catch that typo. So we will make the adjustment for future agendas.
Yeah, listen. Public comment. After the agenda. Who would like to go, Cherie or?
Now I gotta hand this first.
Okay.
Even though I was ready first.
Okay. Cherie, you may go. I know you had some.
Are you, are you commenting on the agenda or a public comment?
No, I said the agenda.
So Steve, do you have a comment on the agenda or do you have a comment for public forum?
Steve, President Pro. You're on mute.
Okay, just.
Mr. Pro, we see that your hand was raised and when you're off mute. We'll hear you. Asked to unmute. Okay, okay, uh, let's see.
I would just.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Adopt the agenda now? I make a motion.
Are you trying to talk about the agenda or?
I don't know.
No, you want public. That one you have to wait.
Okay.
That one they pull.
This one.
You wait until public.
Do you have an agenda to? So would you like to make a motion?
I make a motion to adopt the agenda with the amendments and leaving the items.
I need to pull something off the.
We're not there yet.
We're not there yet.
We'll, we'll, we'll get there.
Okay.
All right, you going to specify what? What?
Specifically to amend the adoption of the agenda to remove item.
Eight.
Eight F and to move the presentation of cybersecurity before.
Budget.
Budget.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 The most, motion passes.
Mr. President, can you hear me now?
Yeah, Steve, do you have a comment for public forum or was it on the agenda?
For the public forum.
Yeah, we're almost there. So give us a minute. We're, it's our next item.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, public forum. Pursuant to government code, section five nine, nine five four, the Brownack members of the public shall be afforded the opportunity to speak at any agenda items. The board president will call a public for public comment. Those wishing to address the board on this matter that is not on the agenda and within the jurisdiction authority of the district, they do so during this time. Follow the procedures for speaking. Cherie, you got the floor.
Okay, recently my water meter was replaced because it was defective. It recorded a one thousand seven hundred percent increase in water use in a one month period. How many of these meters are failing? Because we had others that were setback. I was under the understanding that batteries could be changed by the district. Because they are lifting batteries, but I guess that isn't the case. So they're supposed to last twenty years. These meters were supposed to last, how long is the warranty period? And I think the board needs to put the meter issue on a meeting agenda to discuss the failure rate and any additional cost to the district than the customers.
So I'll address that comment by saying that Ms. Carleyon received a refund for any overages that was charged to her, approved by myself. And it didn't cost us anything to have the meter replaced because it was replaced under warranty. So yes, the batteries do go bad, but we do have a warranty at this point. I'll have to defer to Adam on what the length of that warranty is, but this was fully taken care of at no cost to the customer.
No, I'm just bringing up the issue. Not yet.
How often is this happening?
Yeah.
It's been about five or six where the batteries die like that.
And they can't be replaced. They got, the meter gotta be replaced.
But they're warranted.
But I thought when we were hashing this all out, they were telling us that the batteries could be replaced at the scene.
Yep.
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
Yeah. Huge issue.
Yeah.
Anyway, so I suggest having some kind of discussion maybe on it.
Well, we can't hear on.
Don't tell away.
Thank you.
Yes.
That's noted, thank you.
Wait a minute, and then the second meeting packet has drought written all over some of the pages. So it was supposed to as a permanent.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Dow.
Oh, okay.
Go in the room first.
Yeah.
Yeah, Steve Dow. Recently, I was on a show of mine and they gave out this website, E W G dot org. It's water contaminants. And you type in, you put that in, you type in your zip code, and it came up with G D P U D. And it says, we got two contaminants in our water. One is halloacetic acids, a potential affect cancer. And our, our rate is fifteen point oh P B B. E U, E W G recommends zero point one and legal limit is sixty point P B B. So we're up there a little bit.
We're aware of it. We're addressing.
Where are the other one? Trihalomethanes?
Trihalomethanes are chlorine byproducts. When you introduce chlorine with organic material, it's a byproduct that is a chemical reaction. So we're aware of both of them and we are addressing the problem for both of them.
Now, does that, here's my question. Does that come in the mixture that you add at the, at the plants for you?
Yeah, it's part of the process of treatment, yes.
Oh.
It's, it's contact time, it's treatment, it's, there's a number of factors that, that account for that. It is something that a lot of agencies face, especially here. We have lots of dead ends, lots of areas where water can stagnate. So we have to address it in different levels, different ways.
So we're gonna work on that.
Oh, yeah, we, we have to. We, the state forces us to, to work on that.
And another thing, I had a customer, one friend was talking, we're talking about all the abundance of water we've got, you know, with all these rains going on and up late, there's stumpy spill and all that. And they would ask me, are we thinking about selling water this year? And I don't know, but are you guys hashing that out too? Working on it or?
We are trying to do a lot of things to reduce costs within the district to the constituents, excuse me.
But still, if you do that, you still gotta sell two thousand acre feet at minimum, right?
Uh, we don't have a minimum. We could sell a hundred if we wanted to.
Oh, really? Well, we don't have that.
We don't have what?
Two thousand, we don't have a hundred acre feet.
Why don't we have a hundred?
Hundred acres, a hundred thousand acres.
No, no, you just saw a hundred acre feet. No, no extra zeros. You can sell as much as, if somebody, whoever wants to buy it, you can sell it.
Yeah. No minimum.
There's no minimum. No. If you were told there was a minimum, then they lied to you.
That's what I understood the last time we hashed this out.
I'm sure that somebody did that to try to get something to go through.
Okay, next one, read on the agenda.
Okay, Mr. Pro, you have the floor.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. I'd like to bring to your attention again, I think this is the fifth or sixth time that I have either stood before the board or spoken with the board and its past presidents and general managers. When an action was taken against the district some years ago, there was an agreement made by the parties in the action and the settlement agreement with the board of G D P U D to do certain items. To this date, I have not received any notification that G D P U D has satisfied the conditions of the settlement agreement or any other action that has been agreed to by G D P U D and the signatories of the settlement agreement that would have, that did in fact stop my appeal of the court of Tahoe from being appealed to the higher court. And I'm just making sure that you all know about it. And I'm asking that you agendaize this item and fully comply with the provisions of that agreement. I don't have any more to say on that matter. But I would also like to bring up that Henwood Associates has some sort of an agreement with G D P U D in regards to using our water to manufacture electricity. With G D P U D's ability to work with Henwood, I would like also an agenda item as to address the difference in the cost of electricity and the benefits to the district that may be available to it. And I'd have a discussion on it because as you all know, all of our rates, including G D P U D have gone through the roof. And I think Henwood is receiving a major benefit from this. So I'd like that to be done. And I'd also like to have agendaized at some time in the future this, a discussion as to the condition of the tunnel project that was caving in years ago. And it just went away and nothing was said and nothing was done on it. And I think that's a major cost that's going to hit the district and that needs to be discussed and the public needs to be brought into it. Thank you very much. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Thank you for your input, Mr. Pro. Did, did you take note of that? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pro. We noted that and we'll look into that. Thank you.
We still waiting for volunteers on the tunnel.
Always you're gonna go.
Take your canary. If I can push you.
I, I know a guy who knows it. It's been there, done that.
I'm sure.
At this time, we've closed the public comment forums. Now to the consent calendar. Seaman?
I like the full A for correction.
If it's a typo, you can just.
It's not a typo.
Okay.
Yes, like to also make note of the fact that consent calendar items four B through E are revisions to current policy and not new policy.
Well, four B is not a new policy. Four B is a list of equipment that we're surfacing.
Four C D, four C D and E, yeah. Okay. I got. Go ahead. Did you have something?
And you got the typo on four E, correct, please?
Yeah.
Remember the public, yeah, brought up that they were new, as if they were new policy, but these are just revisions.
Well, it's still on it. It's on.
Four C, I'm gonna pull.
You're welcome to make a public comment on them. And then if it warrants a poll, then you can make that comment.
That isn't what the policy states. It says I emailed them.
Yes, but they don't, they are not required to pull them because you, you can make a comment as to what you would like to address and then they can make a decision whether or not to pull it. So you can open up for a comment. We have, we're gonna pull A for, for a, an issue from Director Seaman. Does any other director want to pull any consent calendar items?
I wanna pull. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was holding for you.
Oh. Okay, okay. Or C, I like to pull four C and I would like to pull, I think it's four D. And what is this? This is four E. Oh, it's four E. I have a question. Can you see this? So four E. Four E, I just had a, a real simple question, but I don't know. Do we want to pull it or?
No, you can provide the question and see if that's substantial.
Let me see. What do you mean? See if it's substantial. Oh, I gotta find it again. Let's see. I got a question on the date where it says adopted, the low income rate assistance program. It, it seems confusing to me. It says adopted March thirteenth. And twenty eighteen is out and then a twenty is in. So it's twenty eighteen again and then twenty four is out. What, what?
So we're, we're, we adjusted some of the language in there and we're going to go for another adoption. We have to, we have to go over this one often because it's, there are many moving pieces to that one. So we, we adopt it very regularly.
Okay, so like I guess the date has been corrected to twenty eighteen even though it was already twenty eighteen?
Correct, yeah, that's, that's the one. Yeah, that's the adopted date.
Okay, let me just. I just was confused about that. We corrected it to the same date.
Yeah, the clean copies on the attachment for it.
All right, so we pulled four A, four C and four D. Am I correct in that vigor?
Yeah.
Yeah, so was there any other board members that wanted a full consent calendar items?
Okay.
So you can go for a motion on the.
I made a motion to accept consent calendar items for B and for E.
Okay, but I have a question.
So you did not take a public comment before that motion.
Okay, on four E, when a customer mails or delivers an application, why do they not get an email acknowledgement that their application has been accepted? We never hear a word. And they had, and everybody's email is on the form. So why ask for the email? It's not gonna be whole. Because it could be two, three months if it got lost in the mail. And they're goes the benefit. And that's called customer service.
We can, you can pull it and make adjustments if you like, or we can continue with the motion. Your choice.
Well, we should close the public comment first. See if there's any other public comment.
For that item or all of them?
As it relates to the consent calendar.
Yeah, okay, so I still have, I have some on four C.
Well, four C is gonna be pulled as a separate item. So that is four B and four E, four B or four E?
Yeah, only four.
So would you?
Mr. Pro still hands still left?
I think that's a, Mr. Pro, I'm gonna notice that your hand is still raised. Is that a hang, a hanger on, a hand or are you still looking to comment?
I would just, okay. All right.
So I would like to amend the motion based on that and I would like to approve for B. And we will pull item E for, bring it back to a committee for, to add any appropriate revisions.
We can add, we can add language here.
We can do it here. Okay, someone keeps pulling matic here. So we'll just, I make a motion that I amend my motion just to approve consent calendar items for B.
Second, second. Second. Did you get motion?
I have a second.
Okay. Okay, we got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. For consent calendar for B.
So now just open up each other individually.
So item A, two little minutes.
I wanted to, on the second page of the minutes, it said President McDonald called for vote. He wasn't in the room at the time. And that was it.
That's, so, yeah, that is a yeah, I think that's just because the rest of it was for him, but you did, you were running the meeting at the beginning. So we'll add that and change the beginning to Vice President Seaman. You're trying to go up.
Yeah, that was it.
For item number two, adoption of the agenda. Am I correct in what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, because they didn't show until ten twenty. This is what was.
Good catch, good catch. So I think we can approve that with the change. If you like a public comment.
Oh, public comment, sorry.
On the, on four A.
Public comment. Okay. Call for lecture. Motion?
I make a motion to approve item A with the corrections.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, now opposed? Listen, pass this, pass item four A. Four C?
On four C. It says on section four, we'll go to page two or three and it's under section forty two oh five, point oh five. You're taking out the fact that the district is maintaining a website and it says the agenda shall be posted on the website. So there's no reference to the, actually being the district website. So I think we should insert this, the word district before website.
Can you show me, excuse me, forty two oh five point five?
Yep.
So what do you?
Okay, see where it says redlined?
Yep.
It says if the district maintains a website, what the original was, the agenda shall be posted on the website. So you're stating that the district has a website, but you're taking that out to reference to the district website. You're taking all that out and you're saying the agenda shall be posted on the website for public information. It's not.
Would you be okay with the change of the agenda shall be posted on the district's website?
Perfect.
So can you just add that as language?
That, that, that was the minor one.
Yeah, no, that's perfect. That's a good catch.
On page three or three says board member requests in addition to future meeting agendas. I don't understand why we're, why we're doing that. This was a big issue in the past in that board members were not being able to get stuff on the agenda. What?
It's not removed. It's just redundant. It's still in four two oh five point oh two A.
Say that again.
If we send four two zero five point oh two A, we just didn't put it again at the bottom because it's in.
It's in there twice is what you're saying. The language is in there twice.
Yeah, that whole paragraph we just copied again. It's the, it's what we put in four two oh.
Oh, okay. It's all right. I don't know how I missed that. Okay, perfect.
And then I know there was a public comment, Director McDonald from, from the street.
Okay. Cherie, open it up to the public.
The agendas should be posted on the district's Facebook page. And I probably seen maybe one in a whole year.
We, yeah, we are never gonna reference Facebook in, in any of these policies. So that's a discretionary thing. It is something we are going to do, but we're not gonna reference it in the policy.
Section four two oh five point oh four, where does a public member sign up to have meeting information mailed to them? It was taken off the website a year ago. And if you're not a customer, because I remember some meeting where you had to have Water Smart or they were gonna start sending emails to people. And only for Water Smart.
Yeah, but we haven't done that.
Okay, but where, the part where it said sign up for email was taken off of the website. Like in years.
So it's on the website. It's on the contact us page.
Yeah, yeah, but when it doesn't say to submit or meeting packets or anything, that's to ask a question. The way I read it.
Are we required to do packets for the public?
Uh, no. You, you're, you're supposed to provide the notice if they asked of you to receive the agendas. You're supposed to give notice the same time it goes out to the public. So that's usually just the email list.
But the district. We maintain them.
Then my other comment was about what Mike Teef said about that policy. Because they fought tooth and nail to get that put in.
Yeah, nothing was changed. We just cleaned it up.
That's in the same agenda. What, which one did it get?
It's in forty two oh five point oh two.
On number four C.
Yeah.
That's the exact paragraph.
Yeah, it says the same thing.
It was just copied and pasted.
So it has the three months or something?
Three, three.
Regular board meeting.
Okay, so I think it's just the one change to the district website that, that we're gonna add reference to the district's website.
I'll make a motion to approve for C with that one minor insertion of district.
Second.
Seconding, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? Motion, motion passes consent on writing four C. Four D. I think that was Director.
That we made. Digital records, it says under section forty two, forty point oh three, page one of three. It says special, let's see, a record that, a regular special meeting, it will be made in the purpose of preparing the, compared. The recording may be destroyed after thirty days following the event that was recorded. So what it's saying, what I've taken it to say is that the recordings of the, of the board meetings will be destroyed after thirty days.
That's correct. That's a record retention policy for the state of California.
Just thirty.
Just thirty days? I mean, we've been able to go back to, to recordings years ago on there. But I think we should keep the recordings. I know that it takes up a ton of space on a, on a server, but I think you should copy them to a C D or something. I think they need to be kept.
That's why we're, we're putting them on, on the YouTube and we, we have them.
Okay.
So, yeah, I agree with that, Mike, and that was the law because I saw it went down from ninety to thirty, but that's the record act and I brought that up and we can retain it in-house. That's why we have our YouTube page. So you can keep it.
Yeah, but that's, this, the requirement's a minimum, isn't it?
No, that's the requirement. That's the maximum. We have to do it.
Well, right, but we, we have to do it for thirty days. But we can do it longer.
Correct.
Correct. Right, that's what I'm saying.
So, so we're having another policy that's gonna come out. That's gonna be all the record retention stuff.
Yeah.
So that would be a better place to put this. All this is saying is that we must maintain it for thirty days.
A minimum of thirty days.
In the records retention policy, which will be on probably the next board meeting, it will be when we as a district would like to not record them anymore, not keep them anymore. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah, but, but so I'm still, I don't like this being part of, what this is reflecting is what the minimum requirement is.
Correct.
I think we should be above that. I don't like having this.
Say May.
Huh?
It says May.
May.
Yeah, May.
All right, I still don't like it.
Well, it was, remember, this is, we only changed, the only thing that changed was the law is thirty and we changed ninety to thirty. That was all that was changed.
Well, your big mistake was you brought this to my attention.
It was there before. Unfortunately, we voted on this before. So if we want to change that totally out, we can. It's in the records retention act, but that's what the maintenance of digital records are, so.
But all I'm saying is I don't like having in here saying that we can destroy records that we have that are older than thirty days. I don't, I, I, I don't like that.
You still have the other document available. You still have the other document available.
What are the documents? You have the minutes. The minutes do not reflect everything that was there.
Retention of, uh, retention. So. If you want to have the retention records for the district. Also be reflected here in digital records for that, we can. If you want to do that.
Oh, I'm not understanding what you're saying. Are we having a different opinion as to what recording means?
No, there is a retention policy of what the district will actually do in retaining all of the different records, whether it's uh, and there's a list that's coming out.
Okay.
So we can put specifically in there what we want to do with the um. Retention of our YouTube and stuff. And I would say that when we come up with a um. Recommendation that we can amend this to match. So we can uh, have digital records. We can uh, hold this policy until uh.
Yeah, well, I would like that. You got two policies.
Yeah, so we'll hold it.
That are going to conflict. So.
They're, they're, they're not really conflicting. So all this is saying is that this is a legal requirement for it and it may be destroyed after thirty days. But our record retention policy will be the actual set amount of time that we're going to re-. Keep everything. So I understand there, there, there is. I understand you see where you see the contradiction. I don't know if it actually is a contradiction, because this isn't saying that we're going to destroy the method thirty days, but it's like, you, you can't do it before thirty days.
One is a requirement, one is a preference.
When, when is the other policy going to be?
Next, uh, we're in the middle of it right now.
All right, let's get my bit of judgment.
In an open session, I will, I will affirm that we're not deleting any recordings.
Yeah, that was, I was.
So if you delete this recording, you got. There's nothing to fall back on.
What's uh?
Oh my gosh, I did, yeah. I'll make another recording after this record.
How long? It'll be in a minute.
It's in the, I think she's already written it down.
Okay, all right. If YouTube's our backup, what's YouTube's retention policy?
Ever, in perpetuity.
Is that right?
I mean, there's YouTube on there from the, like, early two thousands.
Right, just because, but what's their policy?
Yeah.
Okay.
They're not, they're not legal repository is the only problem.
Any public comment?
Yeah. On that subject, destroying meeting recordings only after thirty days is not being very transparent. They could be kept for a minimum of a year. They need to be added to the meeting date on the website, which stopped in August twenty twenty-three. One in November, there, the MP four, MP four is not on the website. Why isn't there a YouTube policy? I see that the policy now states summary of public comment. Is that going to be implemented instead of just the public member's name? Like, Sheree spoke about YouTube. Something short instead of just our name.
Yeah, we're not going to try to disseminate uh, how to pare down any comments because if we. If our objectiveness is not what you think you said. I don't, I don't want anybody here at, at the staff trying to decipher what you are saying. So that's why we say you made a public comment. You can reference that public comment within the recordings.
Okay, but it says summary of public comments in this policy. It doesn't say person's name. And I think Sheree spoke about YouTube. That's. At least the subject matter. Board.
Yeah, we got, taken over that. Okay, thank you. That's it.
There was a question. Uh, Steven, I know you, I saw your hand go up online. Mr. Prowl. Uh, did you still have a comment? It went up a couple of times, so I'm going to give you the, the chance to make a comment if you have to or want to.
Okay, one of the meeting.
Um. I, I can see the screen. I'm just trying to be helpful. I, I, I don't think that the, the comment was necessary.
Okay.
Let's let the president run the meeting, not the public. You know.
Yeah.
Let's, you need to hit.
Right, yeah. Okay, so like I was, I was going to close public comment for this portion. Um, is there a motion? Are you satisfied with the? I don't know, thirty-one days. Yeah. Okay.
Or not.
Would you like to?
All right, I think, okay, we'll, we'll accept.
Uh, was it D? Uh, yeah.
Yeah, four D.
Thirty day minimum. May, not shall.
I'm not going to say that.
Okay. What's going to, what would you like to do?
I made a motion to accept for D.
Oh, then.
Yes.
Okay, as is. You got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Right.
I, any opposed? None opposed?
So how we did, we, we do um, P R As for the audiences or how?
Point of order. You can't just have members in public.
Right, we, we, we took note of that and uh. It could be discussed.
So somebody will let me know how to get people.
I'll, I'll address it. You have done this in the past and you, you know how to get the recordings. So I think just continue with the way you've done it in the past.
So you won't be bringing them on the website.
So, uh, if motion passes unanimously for item four D.
Yes.
Item E?
Uh, we're gonna, yeah, skip over item E and we're going to go to our presentation with.
Okay, we just pulled that. Okay. All right, um. Please. You have the floor. This is uh, for.
I'd like to introduce Jennifer. She's with the JPIA. Um, she is going to be presenting on our cyber liability insurance. This was an item that was.
Yeah.
Uh, requested by Director Saunders. Uh, and so Jennifer Jobe uh, is going to be kind of talking about what is that we have, how we, how we utilize this. And so I'll just turn it over to her. So thank you so much for bringing us.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And um, thank you, President McDonald and this is the board uh, for having me here this afternoon. I appreciate the opportunity. Uh, to talk to you about the very exciting topic of your cyber liability insurance. So I'll try to keep it entertaining. Um, oh, thank you. I appreciate that. Um, so as, as um, uh, General Manager Schneider noted, um, uh, Director Saunders and Director McDonald had asked um, um. Speak to you all um, back in, I believe it was October, right, at Aqua Conference. And I appreciate you making me time. So if we could go ahead and advance into the slide. So just really quickly on, um, for those of you that may not be aware, um, or members of uh, the public participating online, just what is the JPA, the JPIA? Uh, we are a partnership of, as we stand today, four hundred California water agencies and um, uh, across the state, um, uh. Dedicated to avoiding the high cost of commercial insurance by pooling our coverage. So, uh, moving forward to the next slide, um, quickly. Uh, the risk sharing uh, programs that we have in the JPIA, liability, property, workers' compensation and employee benefits. Next slide, please. The, um, this next slide shows the, um, talking about or kind of an ancillary program that is a part of the general liability coverage. So cyber liability coverage. Uh, Georgetown has participated in the um, uh, group purchase cyber liability insurance program through the JPIA since its inception. In um, about, uh, or I'm sorry, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. And this graphic just depicts kind of a snapshot, retrospective snapshot. That shows what the premiums have been like over the last several years. And you can see that they were really, really flat um, for a number of years, about ten years ago. When I myself started um, talking about cyber liability insurance with my risk pools. Uh, you know, it was pennies on the dollar, so it was very, very affordable. And you can see there, starting in um, twenty-one, twenty-two, it really started to spike. Um, and I'm certain, uh, as a board, you've recognized the, those spikes in the premiums. So, the current um, uh, policy that we have in place, and it's the very similar, we structured over the last three years. Uh, there is a, uh, members have either a fifty thousand or a hundred thousand dollar deductible for each covered loss. There's a um, a five million policy aggregate, which means that policy wide for all two hundred and seventy-five members uh, within the JPIA. That participate in the program. Um, the policy could bear no more than that five million, but each member on a per uh, loss basis has three million in coverage. Next slide, please. So talking a little bit about cybersecurity, which I'm sure you have all uh, seen in the news, pull just kind of a, this is actually, I'll share. Um, my third similar uh, presentation over the last month. Um, uh, to various water agencies, just because it really is a hot topic. And apologies in advance if I, if anyone here is uh, native uh, to the state of Pennsylvania with my next comment, but. You'll remember likely that comment down on the bottom where the municipal water authority of Al Cuipa um, was hacked. It was a um, a terror, deemed a terrorist attack. Um, I'll speak for myself. I had never in my life heard of Al Cuipa um, until, you know, that, that came about and it was national news. So a couple of other um, just uh, topics. And to share with you, um, the, it is such a, a big issue uh, within our um. Across the United States, the Department of Homeland Security. Actually says that cybersecurity threats to critical infrastructure are one of the most significant strategic risks for the United States. Threatening national security, economic prosperity and public health and safety. So I'm certain that that absolutely rings true for all of you here in the room. Next slide, please. So, um, this data was gathered um, by an organization um, called Intelligent Insurer. Uh, it was a survey that was conducted in twenty, late twenty twenty-three. And um, it, across about two hundred different insurers. Uh, the question was posed, what cyber threat drives the biggest losses across the insurance industry? And you can see there in the, the um, magenta, fifty percent of um, of the uh, responses uh, pointed to ransomware. So ransomware is that whatever kind of software or um, application that um, programmers come up with that um, are able to uh. Hold an agency or an organization hostage um, for money, um, you know, all kinds of different things. Um, you can see there coming in, in second. In the turquoise uh, phishing attacks, which really um, pulls into uh, or dovetails into ransomware. Next slide, please. So this slide, we break down this also and a secondary question, kind of as the foundation for what I'll talk about in future slides. Uh, the question was posed, what risk mitigation efforts are most important to increasing cyber resilience? So your cyber resilience as an organization is really important, right? And that is what you are doing, what mechanisms and steps you are taking place within your agency to ensure that you as an, uh, you are resilient to outside cyber uh, vulnerabilities. You can see there in um, the magenta, uh, thirty-six percent of that is secured, basic security hygiene. So that's all part of cyber resiliency. So any steps and activities that you're taking place to ensure uh, that your cyber hygiene is, is up to snuff. Um, I will highlight uh, as well, um, the purple um, employee education coming in a very close second. Um, and talk a little bit more about how the JPIA and specific to your agency, we're addressing that. Um, and then as well, the um, vulnerability scans there at eleven percent in the turquoise. Next slide, please. So a little bit, and I apologize, I'm kind of jumping around, but I wanted to, to set a little bit of a, um, like I said, foundation for um, the cyber liability insurance that. The um, that's what has in place. So what is it? Why is it important to you? And then what does the JPIA insurance get you? Um, obviously at its core, um, the cyber liability insurance for Georgetown Divide is a tool or a mechanism to transfer the risk, right? So if you, uh, your agency incurs a um, a cyber attack or a cyber breach of some sort. And it's obviously going to cost you some money to take care of that. So you're transferring that uh, liability and that exposure to the insurance policy that you have in place. Why is it important? Because you want to have coverage, just like any other exposure that you have. Um, and then what the JPIA insurance gets you. Um, I had shared earlier on the other side, even with the, the rising premiums, uh, you're getting your agency has a fifty thousand dollar deductible for any loss. Um, with a three mil- three million dollar limit. So that's the financial piece of it, but the ancillary and supporting pieces of that, um, I'll talk about more in other slides. But um, with respect to boots on the ground from the moment that you have any sort of cyber breach or cyber activity, um, loss. You will have support um, from our insurer. You'll have, in the form of handling the claim. Um, bringing in any outside uh, service providers that you would need anywhere from, uh, you know, um, uh, cybersecurity experts um, that will look at. Uh, um, you know, if there was a transfer of funds, going back and tracing all of that forensic experts. Um, as well as the high-tech experts that can come in and look at um, any ransomware or malicious uh, software that might have made its way onto your servers. That is not something that the JPIA, I don't have any colleagues that specialize in that. And so that's why we uh, utilize those uh, service providers through our insurers. Uh, next slide, please. Um, so talking about the risk management resources that are part of the premiums. Um, that you pay to the JPIA. Um, the first, which um, I know both President McDonald and Director Saunders heard a lot about. At conference and hopefully you all have, um, at least at the staff level, um, know about and have been receiving communications on. We rolled out this year a service um, by the name of Kind. And what Kind does is they are actively, regularly, in a non-penetrative fashion, scanning your domains. So they're scanning um, the um, main Georgetown Divide P U D uh, website domain. They are also scanning any domains. Looking the way, uh, I guess the best analogy would be that, um, you're the house, Georgetown Divides the house. Uh, the lights are on and the bad guys through the, the vulnerability scans are looking for ways in. So they're looking to see what windows and doors need to be opened. Um, any um, email or any other type of domains that are public, that face the outside, that are publicly facing, those are the uh, domains that are being scanned. So Kind does that um, on a uh, regular basis. And then every thirty days, there is a report that is um. Uh, produced. Um, it's a very easy dashboard. It, it, when you log in and look at the dashboard, you've got red, yellow, green. And um, it shows the vulnerabilities. The, obviously the goal is to be at, at all green or maybe yellow, just as a, as a warning. Um, anytime there are vulnerabilities that are identified as an alert, that would come up under their red. Uh, JPIA staff, so my colleagues and I are notified and um. We can serve as the liaison um, between Kind and um, Georgetown Divide, uh, the identified individual on the staff. That would work with Kind to work through um, those vulnerabilities, understanding them. Um, I'm not certain how robust your um, technical or I T uh, team is here, but I know I'll use the JPIA again, referencing back. We don't have high tech. We have I T that manage, you know, our desktop support and things like that, ordering equipment. But we don't have cybersecurity experts on staff. That's where Kind comes in and they'll help you to understand, um, to relay. What um, uh, remediation efforts you would take um, to uh, uh, turn those uh, red vulnerabilities into yellow and green. Um, in addition to Kind service, so that is a service that um, we, uh, the JPIA brought in as part of the, the premium that you pay. Uh, to participate in the program, but our insurer, uh, by the, uh, the insurance companies, uh, is Coalition. They have their own um, cybersecurity experts that are also conducting scans. So it's been a really interesting process if we, as we've rolled out Kind, um, in having Kind's kind of, you know, mesh. With Coalition so that we can get a real um, uh, baseline understanding of what both Kind and Coalition are looking for. In identifying the vulnerabilities so that we can make sure that those match up. Um, rest assured, if you are thinking to yourself, hmm, we haven't heard from Kind, that's a good sign. Um, if you haven't received any calls or any emails. From Kind directly, it means that scans um, that have been taking place since July of last year. Um, have not identified any red level critical vulnerabilities. Because as you know, I mentioned, we have two hundred and seventy-five members participating in the program. So the rollout is um, is uh, is segmented. And um, we asked Kind to, uh, work with. The agencies that had critical vulnerabilities first. So if you haven't heard anything and I saw Liz nod with a smile, so I think that means a good thing. Um, thank you for advancing. So moving on to um, the next uh, uh, resource that we were able to bring in is Know Before. And hopefully you are all aware of that, at least at the staff level. Um, Know Before, you will recall from my previous slide, at thirty-five percent, employee education is um, one of the biggest areas, excuse me, to focus upon. So Know Before is a service that um, provides training and education. To uh, employees within the agency, users um, behind each individual agency's uh, domains and um, staff. To um, in uh. Uh, to help in identifying phishing, malicious um, cyber attacks or anything like the like. Um, one of the really neat things, so Aqua JPIA ourselves, we've been a member or a subscriber to the Know Before service for about five years. So I, on a firsthand basis, um, I figured it out that it's about every Friday between one and three, which I decided our I T department has decided that we're really tired. Um, by that time of the week, we get an email that might look um, a little bit suspicious. So through the training, you know, and, and I think everyone's either experienced or at least heard. So through the training, you know, and and I think everyone's either experienced or at least heard of the emails where, you know, I'm gonna pick on you, Liz. Liz gets an email, you know, and it's from Nick and it's like, oh, my gosh, I can't get to you, you know, I lost my phone, whatever. Can you transfer a hundred thousand dollars immediately to this account? You know, offshore, offshore in the Caymans. And through this training and and Know Before, it teaches you skills like looking at, you know, hovering over the the from, is it really from Nick? You know, also text messages, things like that. So it, I know. Again, speaking for myself personally, it has absolutely heightened my awareness. I always thought I was pretty good at it. And I'll share when I, I'm fairly new to the J P I A. And I was about two weeks in and my office is right next to the C E O's and it's your next chain of command that gets the notification if you fail the phishing test. And I clicked on it and it was one of those things in the moment as I'm clicking, it's like slow-mo. Because I just knew. And the next thing I hear is Andy Sells, my C E O, saying, really? At the top of the phone. And, you know, it was embarrassing because I literally, you know, had been, we'd just come out of a meeting where we're talking about Know Before. Yeah, it was, it was pretty embarrassing.
But back to training, you win.
Exactly, correct. Yes, that was my next email, like, congratulations, you now have automatically assigned training.
I did it on my past company a couple of times. I had to go to training all the time.
But it was really helpful. And so and there's also videos and, you know, proactively in advance. So it's something that's really great. I'm not sure if that has been rolled out within the agency yet. If it has not, it is coming. We had a little bit of some kind of fits and spurts in 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 getting it rolled out. We've made some adjustments with Know Before and if you haven't heard from them yet, you will be hearing from them.
And is there a cost to this?
It is not. It is a part of of your cyber premiums. So backing up just really quickly a little bit, you know, I had mentioned, and you know, you don't need to go to training. You're so good. On that chart where I had showed the graphic of the premiums. And, you know, like I said, pennies on the dollar for close to to, you know, six, seven years. And then that big spike, we have, if you'll recall from that graph, we have leveled out. So and this was shared, you know, through the board and and at conferences over the last year and a half. What we chose to do, we came in with actually about a two hundred thousand dollars across the two hundred and seventy-five members that participated in the program, about a two hundred thousand dollar cost savings with relative to the overall rates from year over year at expiring. So what we decided to do was to keep the rate flat, charge the same amount that we had charged the year prior to collect and then offset using that two hundred thousand dollars. We knew what we had to spend. And out we went and solicited looking for a service provider for help with training and education. Because that's what we were hearing from the members is, this is great, we have coverage, but we really need help with training and education and and services. But in particular, for agencies that don't have, you know, a real robust in-house I T team. So just quickly, in recognition of your time, just looking forward, the cyber insurance market, I pretty much touched on that, is that, you know, rates and overall premiums have really leveled out. The insurance market has definitely realized there is a need for cyber insurance. And so the market itself has expanded. There's a lot more capacity. There are a lot more insurers. For us, what that looks like specifically J P I A is that we would like to be able to get to the point within the next handful of years. And this is at the direction of the board to turn this program into a self-insured program versus a fully insured program. So that's something that staff is has will be continuing to monitor and work for. Expanded regulatory landscape across California. The January one of this year, there is an expanded consumer or an element, a component to the Consumer Privacy Act. I don't know about you all, but I purchase a lot online and do a lot online. So I'm constantly entering, you know, my private information. And the California C P A has really cracked down on on securing our, you know, Joe Schmo's private information. Really, the big thing I will leave you with, if you aren't scared enough from all of the headlines that you hear about cybersecurity breaches, is the A I related breaches and the deep fakes and just the ability. It is absolutely terrifying to me to think that, you know, there are components out there in cyberspace of my voice. And there are people that are intelligent enough to be able to stitch together, you know, an entire directive out of, you know, using my voice that they could then take and and send to a colleague, you know, going back to my earlier example of, you know, it's a phone call that's like, hey, I need help, send me money. But that's something that we're very much keeping abreast of as the insurance market continues to grow. So I believe that is the end. Any questions?
Jennifer, what's been clarified, self-insured versus fully insured?
So the, I'll use our liability and property, which programs which Georgetown participates in. So actually, let's use property as an example, so it's simple. So we have five hundred million dollars of coverage. You have five hundred million dollars of coverage through the J P I A. If you think about it in kind of a layered fashion, built, you know, Legos, if you will. The J P I A self-insures for the first ten million of every property loss. Meaning that we collect as a whole, for all of the members that participate in the property program, we collect. You contribute into a pot. It's a pool, it's a risk pool. So that any loss you have in that first ten million is part of the self-insured fund. So all of your other water districts have contributed to that. Versus above that, we purchase insurance. So another kind of maybe more direct analogy would be if you don't have auto insurance, you're self-insured, meaning that from the dollar one, it's on you. It comes out of your pocket. Does that make sense? Okay. So the benefit, one of the big benefits, obviously, of self-insuring as a public agency is that we are able to circumvent the high costs and kind of the peaks and valleys of the commercial market. Because commercial insurers are, they're a business, right? They're they're a for-profit organization. They want to make money. Whereas self-insurance, we're not making money, it belongs to you. That's the benefit of belonging to the risk pool. You're in a risk pool. When there's years, and I'm sure for those of you that have served on this board for a number of years, you've had years where our C E O has come to you and brought you one of those big kind of Ed McMahon style checks. Because you've over contributed for years. So as you move year over year, you know, you have the ability to perhaps receive refunds. Whereas with commercial insurers, that's their profit. They keep that if they overcollect. So it is definitely, like I said, would be beneficial with respect to the cyber liability insurance to move to a self-insured structure so that we're collecting what stays in the pot and it stays in the pool versus making money for the insurance companies.
I I saw in the news last night, there was pharmacy insurance company that got hacked and they were talking about paying, I think, a three million dollar ransom. What are some examples of the the risk that water districts look at? Is it releases of personal information? Is it sending out fake bills? Is it actually going in and messing with the controls of water systems? What what are the potential risks that we are looking to avoid or be reimbursed for the cost of things? What 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 are risks are we looking?
All of the above. So the the three examples that you just gave, I'll point back to the Alacquifa in in Pennsylvania. What they did is, and again, they were not asking for anything. It was a political statement, as I understand that. But what the hackers did as part of that political statement is they were able to hack into that water agency, SCADA, and shut things down until the, what the ask was, is that the local government come out in support of the the political statement that was being made as part of that. I can share with you that most recently, one of the district, districts that participates in the J P I A cyber program had a loss. Fortunately, it wasn't too much money and they were able to get it back fairly quickly. And I mean, like, within a couple of days. But what happened was there was a bad actor that was monitoring. There was a capital improvement project that was going on. And there were a lot of invoices coming in and out by the project manager through email. The email of the project manager for that particular event. And so the bad guys were able to see that these invoices were coming in and out of email and they were being approved. A, an individual created an invoice that was fake. That was used, utilized the logo of the general contractor on that account and sent the invoice for a specified amount along with an email saying, hey, you know, I had some issues with my with my business bank and I had to make a change. So here's my new bank, my new banking information and, you know, please pay within, you know, net ten or something like that. And unfortunately, it was paid. So it it's really all over the board. And like I said, with, you know, the possibility of water districts, you're critical infrastructure. And that's why the Department of Homeland Security recognizes that cybersecurity, you know, exposures being so, so critical to water agencies.
So given that example, would you suggest that the treasurer and co-treasurer get trading and this kind of thing? Because we're a duplicate set of eyes for everything.
Yeah, but you guys don't really have a lot of opportunity to do online or e-transfers, which is, I think, the biggest issue that we're, she's referring to.
And the one thing I will add is we're probably gonna be, as elected officials, forced into this training. It's going to be a legislative thing. And we do get those phishing emails too. So you'll get something that says, oh, treasurer, please send this money in. And we don't have access to it, but they'll still come to us. So we still have to look at our phishing stuff as well.
I think at the very least, you need to send Liz to training so she doesn't say Nick on her grant.
Sorry, Liz.
Don't send Liz to training.
We've been getting a lot of Microsoft three sixty-five, reset your email passwords. Don't click on those.
Yeah, the best way I could say to to understand this is to look at the email, the from. If it looks fishy, it probably is. And then a lot of times it's the H T M L or some other weird acronym. So we get a lot of them. We we just kind of delete them all.
There's a question from. I got another question. Oh, our SCADA, we have that, right? Okay, and that's for both treatment plants?
Both. One's not full SCADA.
Wall is not?
No, it is, it is, but it isn't. Yeah, it's not. It's a more of like a panel program.
So it's not accessible from the outside?
Let's uh, let's take this discussion off.
Especially if we keep recordings after thirty days.
Exactly. We don't want to advertise what we we have, they have ability to get into. I'll 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 take you, give you a tour, me and you. How's that?
Okay. Well, you said that before. You're supposed to go to power plants. We were supposed to go.
I'm up here.
Friday.
Come tomorrow.
I'll go back.
All right. We have a question from the public.
Are you opening public comment?
Pardon?
Are you opening public comment?
Well, I just did.
I would just make it clear, open public comment, take it and then close public comment.
Open a public comment.
Sure.
I have a question. The districts that you have enrolled in this, is that the only issue that's ever come up? Or is there other issues that came up? I mean, have you had very many things to pay out for all the districts that are under the J P I A?
I actually can't give you a definitive answer to that relative to, I mean, it's pretty broad to say, yes, we've had a lot or no, we haven't had a lot. But I don't have that, I don't have specific number that have been paid out. But in speaking very generally, it has been, I would say, on average with other public agencies.
Okay, good. Not so much yours.
I guess I don't understand.
Well, I'm just so much. I mean, have you had a lot of districts ask for reimbursement for losses?
With, right, no, I would say on average with other public agencies. I mean, I don't see it as being a lot now.
I like numbers.
Yeah, I don't have any organization in our action.
Are you a public agency?
Yes, yeah.
Mr. Dove, go ahead.
I'm really worried about somebody being able to hack in and tweak the chemical, you know, the water treatment plants, you know, put more in and then poison everybody. That's what it's best.
So there was a story that that happened and it was actually determined that was the person at the plant who did that. So that nobody has hacked in and done that, that that we know of, that has been advertised. So that that is something that, like, again, not not racing, I'm recording.
Yeah, don't, don't.
But this isn't, this isn't something that's really easy to do with our system.
No more public comment, then we'll close it. Public comment.
Are you providing, like, I know I've had multiple online trainings for that of what you look for, how you do it, what you don't open, you know, is that available? And I mean, the other thing I remember, it was like you don't add programs to the system. And the problem like with us, where I'm private, I'm personal computers, so that's a risk too.
Yeah, we don't have, our administrator, I T administrator is the only person who has access to add programs. So like, you can't just go and start downloading stuff. And then I think that's what she was talking about, is that Know Before.
Correct. So the Know Before training that will, that is available to the district. What I see most often is that most boards are included in that, in that training. And so when we have, when the the district is contacted, I'm assuming, Liz, can I pick on you again? Have you been contacted by them yet? Know Before to, okay, all right. So when the district is contacted, what they will do, what Know Before will do is ensure that they have a list of all of the emails and everybody that's on staff. And they'll ask the question, do you want to include your board? Most agencies do include the board in that so that you will also be the recipient of the trainings and then the the fishing campaigns. The fake fishing campaigns.
So at conference, I was, I thought this was a paid, that's why I asked a question if this is free or not. I I was under the impression that this costs the district money.
Nope.
So now that I know that it's not, we can sign up and we'll get it all taken care of to send out for everybody for training.
It's complimentary.
I I I misunderstood, so.
No, that's okay. And I'll and I'll follow up on mine as well to to make sure that, you know, you're you're on the list coming up soon.
Director Saunders?
Yeah, thanks for coming, Jennifer. That's also the other reason why we asked her to come is for Mitch and I to present this to everybody would not be as good as what you were able to do. And also to explain that this is a free program that's part of our liability. And this is one of the benefits of being a J P I A is we can get our J P I A representative to come and explain any of the programs we're in. And this is one of the things I would recommend all of our directors to go to the next Aqua J P I A conference in Sacramento, which is free because they provide a lot of this information and you can learn a lot about what we get and the benefits from our Aqua J P I A in terms of our health insurance and member benefits and liability and property and all of that. And always see that, hey, we're doing well and we get refunds when refunds are available. So we've been doing pretty well and thanks so much for coming.
And and you've been very eager to come here to speak and and so thank you for for coming and and affording the time to us. I know when we want to report on things, we're kind of limited-ish to three or four minutes. So nobody's limited you today. So we got, yeah.
Okay, while you have my number, you have my email. And I see Nick regularly, so whether he likes it or not, but so absolutely, more than happy to come at any time.
Where'd you come from?
Sacramento.
Okay, okay. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for having me.
You're welcome. Yes.
President McDonald?
Yes.
We have another presentation and we are running a little longer than I had it originally anticipated. And the gentleman from our federal advocate is trying to get to the state of reunion this evening. And I would like to see if we can push his agenda item. It's it's just a presentation on a federal advocacy to now.
Seven B to now. Okay.
Are you listening to it?
No, I I had my own private editorial about the state of.
Yeah, there we go.
Yeah, I think it's important. So I'd just like to quickly introduce, if that's okay, I, do we have to take a motion on that or anything?
Fine.
Okay.
The board is okay with that.
Mr. Police, you have.
I'll just quickly introduce Don Police with Vectus D C. We did have Greg Morrison on earlier, which is one of his associates. Uh, we did have Greg Morrison on earlier, which is um, uh, one of his associates. Unfortunately, he had another meeting to get to, so he is not going to be able to join us. Uh, however, Don has been working very hard with us to get us uh, money and uh, putting us in the right positions to uh, to uh, you know, further ourselves in the federal eyes. So, Don, please take it away.
Yeah, thank you, Nick, and uh, thanks to you, the the board for having me back. It's uh, been about a year, I think, since I spoke to you. I was introduced to you at the beginning of what is now the end of the first fiscal year I've been with you. And I think I have good tidings to bring, put the State of the Union aside that uh, what we've been working on as priority number one, which is bringing money back to the district is actually coming to fruition this very weekend, and I'll get to that in a sec. But just overall, it's uh, been a real pleasure. You you hear a lot about partisan gridlock, which is clearly here in DC. Uh, there's obviously with the twenty-four elections and the changes in speakerships and majority leaders and minority leaders, it is like a a whirlwind. Somebody said to me today, it's like the movie Groundhog Day that we seem to wake up and experience the same kind of disturbances. However, I will say, and I've been doing this for thirty-five years, working on and off Capitol Hall. In fact, I'm also in Georgetown, so thanks. The behind me is a lot of brick. I'm in Georgetown, DC, so I hope we're somehow symbiotically related there. Um, but uh, to make a long story short, the two things that happen every year are annual appropriations where Congress passes uh, twelve different appropriations bills. Um, containing everything from the two largest, which is the defense budget and the one that funds most social services, labor, health and human services, education, down to the ones where water districts and public utility districts exist, which is the Interior EPA bill, which funds the Environmental Protection Agency, including the clean water and safe drinking water revolving funds. And the Energy and Water Bill, which funds the Army Corps of Engineers and its civil works, as well as the United States Bureau of Reclamation, which I think you all know from the Western United States perspective is very important since it funds uh, water recycling and and water reclamation programs in most of the American West. That is where uh, our firm does really the entirety of our work is with the two A's, the appropriations and the agencies, with the big help from the members of Congress from our delegation. And I'll give kudos right off the top. And again, not being bipartisan, I have laurels from both ends. But Congressman Kylie took of the interest right at the beginning of the whole process here by submitting a one point two five million request for, you know, your uh, project water reliability and fire resiliency storage tank. He submitted it last spring, ushered it through the House Appropriations Committee. And what I do and my firm is we we meet with the staff, brief them fully. And then we also go to work with the House appropriators to make sure that the committee staff has all the information they have and need to move things forward. And the good news is uh, both through Kylie's interest and really doing things right. I'll commend Nick for working with us to fill out the criteria the right way. We're ranging from the appropriate budget to the appropriate categories to go into. We're able to make it through House Appropriations. And then much to my delight, as your DC representative, we did get both senators last year to endorse and do the same thing on the Senate side. And that, oh, that doesn't often happen. It happens many times, but not often. So it shows that your project was not only something that both the House and the Senate took seriously from the start, but enough that we had both uh, late Senator Feinstein as well as uh, the then junior Senator Alex Padilla requested as well through the Senate Appropriations Committee. Senator Feinstein, who of course we all know, you know, passed away last year, had her projects immediately picked up by the interim US Senator now is named LaFonza Butler. Um, we were given assurance really upon Senator Feinstein's passing by Senator Schumer, who's the Senate Majority Leader now, that her projects would be honored and carried forward both by the successor of Senator Butler, but by frankly, the Senate leadership itself. So made it very well positioned that once the House and the Senate acted on the twelve appropriations bills, in this case, the Interior EPA bill, that the district's one point two five million got included. So just yesterday, and I've been texting Nick even over last weekend and going into this week, just to make sure he was in the loop. But uh, yesterday, the House did pass the final six uh, six bill budget bill, which included our project. And the Senate is ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent sure to do it by tomorrow night midnight. So we'll see the president sign it into public law. Don't expect any, I don't expect any last minute hair-raising glitches or anything. So it just means that we'll have in public law by the weekend, one point two five million of uh, Environmental Protection Agency is called the State and territorial, uh, I'm sorry, the STAG, which is the state and tribal assistance grants will be coming to the city from EPA, to the district from EPA. So again, very pleased, year one. Again, with great cooperation from Nick and approval of your board, we were able to at least get this initial return on investment. And uh, it's all good news. And again, thanks to the whole delegation from Congressman Kylie to now Senators Padilla and uh, LaFonza Butler for making it happen. Um, from here, we continue to build relationships on behalf of the district and Nick and I have talked about that since I have decades of relationships with the Army Corps and the EPA and the Bureau of Reclamation and even FERC as needed, that as we build out your legislative program, we're going to be doing more and more together at each level, particularly back here in DC at the headquarters level, to make sure that the district is not only continues to be well regarded, but be put on the map and have more opportunities come up. And the last thing I'll touch upon is in that vein, the Water Resources Development Act, which many of you that have been involved in ALCA conferences and CASA and others know is the uh, uh, every other year bill that authorizes new Army Corps of Engineers projects. And we were called upon by both of our areas, Congress members Kylie and Duarte, to put out uh, requests for this year. And we are going to be working together to ensure that Worda produces a nice, strong Army Corps project for uh, the district as well. And then with the FY twenty-four just being wrapped up this weekend, we're right into FY twenty-five requests. And we'll be working over the next really few days into the next two weeks to request a new round from uh, the House members and the senators. So I hope I've gotten, not gotten too far in the weeds for you, but I just wanted to let you know, you know, why I'm back here as your kind of eyes and ears and, you know, working with the members of Congress and the committees. I got to see Congressman Kylie this morning. Actually, I had a hearing. It was unrelated. It was on education issues, but you know, shook his hand, gave him a quick thanks. And um, you know, and again, I'm just very grateful for the support that his staff gave us. Nick and I had a couple of great Zooms with his staff along the way. They were very helpful. And um, you know, we're we're here and I'm pleased to report, I think it'll be final into public law, this first tranche of one point two five million on the way. So State of the Union, I'm on the way to it, as Nick said. It's uh, dark here already. The the fencing's been put up around the Capitol. I'm just about ten minutes from the Capitol and uh, you could tell something was different. In fact, my um, Uber driver on the way back from the hell earlier said, oh gee, what's going on? Why all the fences? I, so I explained this, well, State of the Union and, you know, extra security comes out and the you know, assault rifles and everything else to protect it. But so we're all watching to see what's uh, what the president's going to be saying. His budget will be coming out shortly thereafter, probably in the next week or two. It's generally seen as more of a discussion piece, no matter who the president or who the party is. We don't put a lot of stock in the president's budget request. What we do, though, is follow up very quickly with the appropriations committees and find out how they're going to be splitting the pie, particularly with the departments that we deal with, uh, which is again, Bureau of Reclamation, US Army Corps of Engineers, EPA, occasionally USTA also since you're a rural district. So again, I hope I've been, I hope I haven't been too all over the place. Wanted to give you at least a concise snapshot of what I've been doing. It's been a real pleasure to work uh, on behalf of the district back here and and communicate with Nick uh, very frequently. And I'm happy to come back as often as you need me to, to give all reports or written reports. And uh, I'm available pretty much twenty-four, seven Eastern time, although I do sleep for a little bit. But uh, you know, if if any of you have any questions on off times, I'm happy to receive it. And if anybody's back for conferences or whatever, whether it's water buffalo events back here, as I call them, or other type of conferences, meetings, whatever, please let me know, or even personal business. Then I'd love to visit with all of you in person uh, back here in DC. So that's by the extent of my oral report. Happy to take questions from board members, Nick, the public, whoever. So.
Yeah, you should open it up to the board. Uh, Director Saunders?
Yep, I just want to thank you for, uh, I know, uh, we're one of the few districts, especially a small district, that has uh, advocacy in uh, DC. And uh, that's one thing we have to explain to our constituents, why I am paying for this. And this has way more than returned our investment. Uh, so that was very good. And uh, right now with Ottawa, I'm working with the headwaters uh, work group and we're trying to get a advocacy group to come to DC. We're dealing with the headwaters itself. So I'll uh, get your information from Nick. So when they do go to DC, they'll be able to.
That would be great, Director. I love working on regional projects like that. One of the other districts I work with in the Southlands, the Elsinore Valley Municipal Water District is doing a very similar regional approach on Dcel. And the agencies back here get really excited to hear about anything you're doing in a you know, cooperative way like that, on, you know, under a regional umbrella. So please let me know. And if there's anything we could do to advance that through Zoom meetings or whatever. You know, I'm I'm definitely available as uh, our colleagues over at the Bureau of Rec here in DC. So.
Okay, this time I'll open it up to the public. The public. Close for public comment.
I'd like to thank you for the presentation. It shed a lot of light on it. I'm the one that signs the checks.
I am grateful for that. And again, I'm very cognizant and. If we weren't being, if we weren't giving you ROI, I wouldn't even want to be here or continue. You know, honestly, that's the way my firm operates. We're a small firm. Got about five or six people back here in DC, equal amount out in California. We operate on, again, bringing home the bacon on good and honest, mostly. I always use the word roads and commodes. We work on with a lot of cities and water districts. And we find that no matter who the party in charge, that everybody wants to fund good infrastructure pro- projects back home. And you guys have several of them. And I think we're going to be moving forward with a robust agenda for twenty uh, four and twenty-five as well.
Right. Keep up the good work.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Police, for your time. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Don. Thanks. I will sign off then and uh, make my way up the hill again. So thanks again. Good to see all of you.
Bye. I'd like to open it, uh, the Office Finance Managers Report.
We didn't do E, did we?
Yeah, we did. B for consent?
Yeah, I thought we skipped it.
No, no, it was part of the.
It was all.
That was one of the, did not get pulled.
Yeah, I thought. I know, we. Cause we're gonna uh. Yeah, we had to add the um.
I thought he pulled, I thought Nick pulled it for later. But have a.
No. Uh, he said we could do it today, if we're honest.
You just had a quick change, right?
Yeah. To add the email response back was what we.
Oh, yeah. If you want to add, we we can, is that something that we can do?
We're doing it now for irrigation. So, yeah.
Yeah, we can, we'll add language in there that will state that we will add an email for uh.
We'll be a water smart email competition.
That's.
So we would that, we agreed that to write the number up before you leave.
Mike? Mike?
So I'm, I make a motion that we uh, approve that item with the uh, item, uh, what was that for? Is that?
For E.
For E on the lewa with the uh, amendment to add the uh, email modification.
Give a second. Don favor?
Hi.
Hi. Any pose?
Just please know that that was four to zero with uh, Director McRobbin absent.
Motion passes, four to zero.
So then, um.
Okay, now we'll go to the Office Finance Managers Report.
So um, I'll turn it over to Jessica for any questions on the Office Finance Managers Report, any of the checks or things of those nature. We do have a presentation to go over preliminary budget, um, numbers that will come after. So I'd like to open it up for comments on the financials. And then we'll do the budget presentation after we do that.
And it was finally decided. So I don't have any other questions this time around. So thank you.
Any questions in the board?
Just an observation, it seems like the fifty-two hundred was under ten percent year-to-date and um, fifty-four hundred treated as over ten percent. You know, to me, that's within reason for year-to-date.
This time I could open up to public comment. Cherie?
Yeah, is there an update on the LSL CPA billing since there hasn't been a billing for three months? Last billing was December. And your older budget, one hundred and fifty-two thousand at that point.
That was the last billing, is the last check you saw go out. So we.
This is January. This information.
Right.
So I haven't mentioned their month.
Okay, so there's not one for Jan. Where are you then?
We may have just got signed today. We have, we could go back and check. Maybe, I'm sure it's been. We we were doing some checking on our side to make sure everything was cop-stetic and uh, one of the bills got held up because we were making sure that the numbers were right. And that may be the one you're seeing for January.
Okay, so then I also suggest you do a budget amendment or if it's over.
We're not going to do any more budget amendments until we get closer to the end of the fiscal year, just because it's, we can only guess at this point. So I'll take it under advisement.
Time to close public comment. Any more? Staff like to make any kind of?
Yeah.
Okay. Informational items.
Um, so hold on, we're going to do the budget presentation.
Oh, okay. Who's doing that?
I will do that.
Okay.
So this is only uh, currently we're only going to discuss the wages and the benefits. And what I'd like to show is the change in the wage and the benefits um, that we are, that are going to be proposed moving forward. Um, so if you. The, this is fifty-one hundred. You'll notice that any of the grayed out areas, we have not started working on that part yet. That'll be the next part we work on. Much of the salaries, we don't have a whole lot of a control over. Uh, but you can, you can see that we're pretty well on track with all of the salaries that we budgeted for last year. And we have received our UAL numbers, we've received our retirement expenses from from purse. So we know what all those costs are going to be. Um, and and if you look at the number in the top yellow bar, the seventeen percent. So that is the percent change from last year's budget to this year's budget. Um, uh, for these, these wages and benefits. If you want to go, we can go through them all really quickly. We will, the next part of this will be to do those department, departmental expenses. So we're just trying to give this to you, kind of show you what's going on with the salaries today. So if you have any questions about the salaries, you want to make, maybe take a pause here, President, Mr. President, and ask any questions here.
Questions? Board? Public?
Oh, public comment?
Yes.
But you're saying that the, the uh, wages and benefits are different than the previous presentation that was made for the finance, maybe?
I didn't say that at all.
So it's the same.
One hundred or should be.
I didn't change it.
And and this does include uh, anticipated increases to labor agreements as well. So we are still can work out some of those differences, but this does include um, potential changes to labor costs. So if you want to go to the next slide.
Close for public comment, next one.
I mean, these are all going to be relative to the same. If you want to take any of the comments out through uh, sixty one hundred, and we're not going to discuss the capital improvement plan because that was just kind of where we are at this year. And I'll explain that when we get further along in the budget process. So this today was just to show where the salaries are, where we're anticipating salaries to come in for next year. So, um, that's where I'd like to go. We did start working out some of the numbers for fifty six hundred for materials and for the departmental expenses. Um, and then I will make note, because it has been brought up more than once by the public, that we have added a new line that is going to be for the CPA. So they will be taken out of professional services in the future. They will have their own budget item. And you can notice that professional services has gone down and that accounting has been added into fifty six hundred. So you go down to fifty six hundred. Right, go back one more. So you'll notice the red there that is adding for a little more transparency on the CPAs and the accounting portion of our budget. But I, we can take any question on this form. This is, this is going to continue to evolve over the next two months. Uh, next month, you should have a general location of where everything will be. You will have more revenues. You will have the departmental expenses. Those will all be seen at the next finance committee meeting, and then they'll all go to, to the board meeting as well. So we're sticking with the, the schedule with the, with the timeline that we originally approved and we're right on track right now. So I would just love to open it up for any questions from both the public and from the board.
Your Christina?
So in other words, the next meeting, we're going to have like a breakout of materials, supplies, office supplies. Cause I don't see any lab in here at all.
Yeah, we haven't done any of those for the.
That's what I'm looking for. It's what, where the little triggers are and what all those low expenses are going to be.
Yeah. So the only one we've already worked out was fifty six hundred. Um, and we're still working on the rest of them.
And fifty six hundred is the only office supplies. We absorbed all office supplies for all the departments.
I, I, I know you're concerned about the lab costs. And so that we will address that when, when it's, when it comes.
One minute, but yeah.
One of many. Okay.
Any more of the board comment, questions?
Just, just a quick comment. Maybe it's irrelevant, but looking at the CIP plan. If we look at the second item down, uh, infrastructure replacement. That's been basically. It's not going to happen, right? That's two hundred thousand that's been allocated. It's not going to be.
It's been tabled for right now. We, we did some work on some of the buildings. That two hundred thousand is to, to push this building out. And, and it just may or may not happen due to architectural concerns, safety concerns, engineering concerns. Um, so there are options to add additional space that would be in the terms of a portable. Uh, and we're still trying to work out whether or not that's the best thing to do. Um, we have a couple of other things that we're going to do here at the headquarters building that's going to take from that. But we are not spending two hundred thousand dollars. We might spend another twenty. Um, improvements here to the building and doing things for some of the new equipment that we're purchasing.
Open this up, public comment.
Yeah, well, we did a summary, expense summary page.
I just said that. What do you mean expense?
Total up to fifty one hundred fifty two.
She's talking about consolidated expenses.
Yeah.
And I think it's done. I just been waiting for all the.
Okay, I guess.
The next time you see this, it will be much more robust. We wanted to, to roll out the salary and benefits and wages numbers. So that you can see, it's not much we can change. It's kind of what we're told or, or what we have agreements to. So that was, that was the goal here was to show you this. I do see an online comment.
Mr. Pro.
Yes, may I speak?
Go ahead, Mr. Pro. You have the floor.
Um, in the charts that we're seeing, um, they're very similar as to what we had years past. Is there any way that when these are made up, that they're in a larger font? And not such a busy, uh, sheet of paper? It's difficult for us older folks, seeing as I'm over eighty now, to read these and to make any sense of them when they're this small because our eyes go crazy. Um, if that could be done, that would be very nice to do and easier for us to look at. Uh, as far as trying to capture what's really happening. I appreciate anything that you could do to do that. The other issue is that when you have the discussion about dollars and cents, it seems as if an awful lot is happening behind the scenes for great sums of money that the public has no knowledge of anything until somewhere along the line, it pops up on an agenda and we don't have adequate time to review what's occurring. And one other suggestion I'd like to give is that you're buying new equipment. And I know that this could fit in later on in another item. But the state has numerous uh, locations where equipment is available for like a dollar when they sell it between agencies. Instead of the vast amount of money that you're proposing to spend on many different items for the district. And I think that that should be explored more in depth before we just go out and buy something new. Uh, we had this discussion some three years ago on some equipment. And it seems that there's some sort of a a thing that we have to have something new that costs hundreds of thousands of dollars instead of getting something from the state or federal government for next to nothing. So I would ask that the board and the general manager, please look into this option that's available to us and save us some money. Thank you.
Oh, I'll address if I can. Mr. Pro, do you use this on a computer or are you printing them out, the, the budget sheets?
I'm looking at it on the computer and I've got a twenty four inch screen in front of me. And it's still very racy. Uh, if you know what I mean by racy, I can see it, I can read it. It just makes me work a lot harder to try and uh, get input.
Yeah, I understand. I apologize. But I think trying to fit as much on a page is our goal, but we can see what we can do. There's also Zoom Peters. It's only posted as a PDF because you can zoom on a PDF. And it does make it a little bit more difficult to, to, you know, follow line by line, but that is an option as well, if you're aware of that. And then I will address the equipment by saying, if you notice, um, that the equipment that was purchased, that was all money that was given to us. So we actually didn't pay for those as, as much as you think. We, we have to buy them, but we were given money from the state to purchase them. So the new excavator and the new skid steer were more or less free. So that's actually less than the one dollar. And then for the, the truck that is um, being proposed today, that is also going to be utilized. There's, if you, um, you wait, we have surplus equipment that we've sold that we're going to be utilizing as part of that purchase if it's approved.
Yeah, I, I, I think you get the gist of my message and you can extrapolate any which way that you want to make it sound wonderful. But somebody sure as heck is paying for that equipment. And if it's not us on the divide, it's someone's paying for it. And if we can find something that is available that we can use, I, I still ask you to look into that. Just because you get something and just because we had the fires, we had all the fires, all the water impacts to our system. And many of us are paying for it now through our insurance and everything. There's no free lunch.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Pro. And hopefully, uh, as the months and years go by, we're cramming more information for transparency on these reports. And as time goes along, we're getting things appropriated or associated with proper buckets. So for transparency, but we lost track of maybe how many items there are to to discern on one page. So, uh, we're going to look into, uh, like Nicholas said, to make it clear as possible moving forward.
I can, I can't make you do anything, but if no one brings it up, you may not think about it. So.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. Okay. Thank you, sir. Uh, move on to informational items now?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, board reports, uh, perhaps we could start with Director Stovall.
I have nothing to report.
Okay. Wow. All right. Uh, we'll go through Director Saunders.
Why don't we go to him last?
Oh, cause. Okay.
Yeah, it's usually really long.
Okay. Yours aren't usually too long, so let's go with you.
I've got nothing.
As.
Not on, on the county board anymore. They booted me off.
Oh, I didn't know.
Okay.
Uh, I only had two things and Director Saunders was gonna touch on one of them. I went to a CSDA who, uh, they gave Senator Gill an award. So I was there to uh, thank her for all her efforts for that. And we also had a irrigation committee last month. And I'll talk about that during committee.
And I'll go. And I have nothing to report. Went to a finance committee meeting. Uh, perhaps I or Director Stovall or Nicholas will report at that point. So, uh, Director Saunders, you have the floor.
So I have, uh, the regional water. There are actually six other meetings that I went to since I filed this report. But I'll just do the highlights of them. So, uh, one is the Regional Water Authority. Um, we're going to have a meeting this month and see if the board, um, approves. They were given a grant from the, uh, Department of Water Resources for super shed water, water resilience programs. This will cover pretty much the area above Fulton. So it will include us. We will be trying to make sure that we're involved in, uh, any, uh, money to deal with that study and, um, our representative that's on that committee is Rebecca Wells of Alberta Water Agency. One of the things we brought up was, uh, withdrawal payment liability with copper. So we know copper is paid annually. And now with the new gas, the, um, requirements, it shows up negatively against our audit. So, you know, appreciation and equipment and all of that shows negatively. So this is one of the next things for us to think of moving forward is, uh, to have an investment trust to offset our open and cowper. So that's one thing to think of where we can, uh, make bonds than they may be making and be able to offset any of those years where we see the fluctuation. Because as we said, we don't get their report until close to the end of the fiscal year. And that's why we have those wide wages. And let's see what else is important to us. Uh, I was gonna give the report from, um, the finance committee. I went to the investment subcommittee for Aqua. And they do have a good page. So I'll bring that in for, um, we can share to see if we want to use that. It's a good snapshot of orderly of, uh, where all of our money is and what the percentage is. So we can track. And that's another good dashboard to use with our investments. And March State Wedge Committee, those results will come up next, uh, next month. California Special Districts Association, we went to our EID. Our CSDA Legislative of the Year was Senator Maria. And I'm sure Nicholas is going to talk about that as well. Director Seaman and myself and, uh, GM was present as a representative of the district. Then, uh, she provided funding throughout. And, uh, that's why she was, uh, recognized. And we see her appropriations from the state. That's it for my, uh, international reports. If there's any, uh, questions on that.
If I have a question on your, on your report in the book here.
Yes.
Uh, and a simple question. Under here, it says the low income household. It has.
That's on their legislative report. I didn't get there yet.
No, this isn't legal. This says board report.
Yes, but if you see there's a big block that says legislative report, so I'll get to that with the legislative. Cause we have some stuff I'd like us to roll down.
Okay.
So we're headed to board. So we'll get to that one.
Okay, we're done.
We're done.
Yes, public.
Okay, now public comment. Open it up for public comment.
So can we do that after all this?
Yeah, they redo all the information.
All right. So then legislative report, so legislative report, we have some items, uh, that I would like us to, uh, get district positions on. Uh, so one is the low income household water assistance program lead up. So, uh, that's a Senator Pinius sponsored bill. And basically, this was used during COVID to help cover, um, renters and people that weren't able to pay their water bill during the time. And they want to make this a permanent act. So this would, uh, help or anyone that qualifies for this to help pay their water bills in perpetuity. So this will be a grant funding system that they can apply for and receive, uh, aid in addition to what we provide as well.
It'll be a continuation of an original program, more adding more money.
So you had a question on that?
Yeah, I don't understand what this means where it says means tested veterans programs. What is, what does means test and mean?
It means that there's a threshold that they look at to see whether they qualify for it or not.
They're not going to define the threshold?
They change it every year.
What kind of is that?
It's a, it's an income based threshold. It's like, it's a federal poverty standard.
How does that affect our our low income? If they get, if they get the grants, then we don't.
Affect our Lira, the one we offer, the, 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 the small one we offer, that one we can still offer. This is, um, so LEWAP is whether the county and people can apply for the LEWAP and then the county sends us a check to basically cover their bill.
Oh, send us the check.
Yeah. So this is the, the county gets the money and then the county pays. They, they, the customer that has to call the county and say, we want LEWAP. And then the LEWAP sends us money, but they tell us in the process that they're going to be doing this. So we don't shut them off or anything.
No, I, I mean that, what I was saying is.
The difference is.
So it's like they put in for the fif- fifteen dollars on this.
Right, yeah.
They put in for the fifteen dollars and then they put in for this. And then they pay us the difference.
So the.
They only get covered, they only get covered. No, not the, the fifteen dollars would be taken off of what LEWAP sent us. So they would get the whole thing. Does that make sense? They wouldn't get to be fifteen dollars plus the bill. They'd be getting just the bill with the fifteen dollars that we would not charge LEWAP for the fifteen dollars.
I'm basically hearing the difference. Uh, the grant gives them up to a thousand dollars. So let's say they have a thousand dollars and they're there. They can apply for this program. And we would get covered for that thousand dollars.
Yes, they'll get all their bill covered like throughout the whole year. It's, it's just when they had, they were struggling. It's number two one one. Number two one one back in the day. You call two one one and you get assistance. It's the same idea as two one one.
And, and Jessica left. I'm not sure. Are we still up?
Four one one.
Are we still doing any more LEWAP? Finished. I know because we were the provider for our area. So I know.
We are not a provider for LEWAP. Is that what you're saying?
Well, we were the ones that, that county kept coming to to make sure we were doing all of the stuff. They put a lot of stuff out and stuff.
Yeah, we still have to, we still have to manage it, but, but the money all.
The money comes, yeah, it doesn't come through. Yes, correct. But we manage that. So I just wanted to know who was full on receiving anyone request or did that formally.
It's formally the county's own money. So we.
Well, that doesn't, there's no money for it. So, so this is what, uh, I'm looking for, uh, support, oppose, or no action. And, uh, my recommendation is you support this so that, uh, low income residents, uh, ability to, uh, have access to this directly.
I think, I think what we're asking is to send a letter of some sort to the senator to say that we, we hope that his thing passes. Supporting federal legislation is very difficult. Uh, it's not different than supporting state legislation. Um, so you send a letter to, as a constituent of this, to the senator that you like this program.
Who sends it?
In the district, we would.
You would? Staff would?
Staff, well, staff would draft it. It would come from, it would come from the district as a whole.
So we need a.
Do it.
Are you looking for?
It's a consensus, yeah.
Can I get a motion?
No, no.
Everybody in favor?
Yeah, yes.
And then, uh, the next one is Senate Bill eleven ten. I believe that's, uh, Senate. Ashton Bill. So basically this bill would put any change to the way the, um, water use efficiency, uh, regulations that are coming up. It will allow for the ability that if you have a so basically what it says is if you're out of compliance, you pay a fine. And this would say if we're out of compliance, but we have this program which provides the extra water, you can. you can use that program to offset the fine, so for instance, if we were short, let's say, three hundred acre feet, but we were transferring three hundred acre feet for groundwater suction, for, uh, groundwater recharge, that three hundred acre feet would be, uh, comparative to taking the fine, so it will let you use your investments that you're using to actually conserve water versus what the state water resource control board will just come up with these overarching restrictions, because a lot of them are going to be cookie cutter and they may not match every district.
You have a question, Director Trump?
I do know.
Okay.
I can come up with one if you like.
I think we're good.
I'm, I'm sure you could.
Yeah, Jason had very hard.
How does, how does this come up with, how do you come up with it?
In terms of what?
That three hundred acre foot example.
I just gave it off the top of my.
Well, I mean.
So basically, I mean, this is what we've been looking at, remember, the water use efficiency is going to be that budget which they're gonna give to the districts based on your indoor, outdoor residential use, commercial, uh, the whole landscape thing, so they're gonna come up with that, and wherever you're short, then you could be, you're gonna be out of compliance, so there'll be things you can do to get in compliance or be fined, and it doesn't capture everything, so this allows for us to be able, or any agency to say, here are some things we put into investment that we get extra water, so.
They're like variances from.
Can we, can we use this instead of having, this makes us meet compliance, cuz it conserves the same amount of water.
So it doesn't affect us really directly right now, we've been told by the state board that we are under compliance until twenty thirty-five, however, knowing the state board, this could change at any minute, it could change tomorrow, it probably changed yesterday, so we wanna make sure that we're supporting, you know, that, that we have these extra options, so that's, I think, what we're asking.
So we don't know what they are, how much, or, okay. So we just need a.
Just a consensus to say, we can send a letter.
I'm good.
All right.
All right. Same, okay.
And then, uh, ten-seventy-two, so that's another local one, that's, uh, for remedies for propositions two-eighteen, and I know a lot of people talk about this, so let's say, um, we collect the props two-eighteen, and then we have an excess amount, this just lets the local government put that into CIP for whatever use that is intended for. That's basically what it does, so. Right now, the only way to reduce it, it also lets you not reduce the cost, so let's say we said we took, uh, let's say it was a million dollars and it ended up being eight hundred thousand, this will allow us to use that two hundred thousand to offset the next increase. Right now, there is no way to do that, and this would kind of allow you to, uh, have that buffer where you can take it off of, um, increasing charges.
It, it was two hundred thousand in excess.
Correct.
Okay. The way you worded it sounded to me like you wanted a million, but it was about eight hundred thousand.
Oh, no, it's, so, so you wanted eight hundred thousand and you collected a million, let's say, that's, that's the shortest term, but, uh, it's probably gonna be more than like two hundred thousand, people weren't ready for that, but this is if you, uh, end up collecting excess, you're able to use that for offsets. Right now, there is no clear way to do that.
So, if you have that two hundred thousand, you can say, okay, we don't have to raise the rates cuz we have this two hundred thousand.
Rough. You can put it away for a rainy day here.
That's, that's a good thing, all right.
Bye.
All right, yeah, but brought things that would all be helpful to the district, so we will, uh, either send letters of support or join coalitions, which is better than, uh, just one of us.
We'll send our own letter, cuz then we can get on as, uh, as a supporting agency.
All right, and that's it for that. Oh, and there was one more, oh, Aqua, oh, I forgot, the one that came today, well, yeah, that was, that was today, so we will, uh, that's the, that's the way of, uh, legislation, it comes pretty quickly, so, uh, this one we can look at, and I'll just talk about it now and we'll bring it forward to look at, but, um, this is the, the Aqua members were urged to send letters to the senate, and this is about the PFOS that we were talking about, so it's the circle of liabilities protections, this is the act that they're trying to make, and what this would do, it would remediate against contaminated sites and hold the parties that caused the contamination to be financially responsible for the cleanup. So the polluter pays model as opposed to the community pays model, so let's say we find, end up with PFOS in our system. They can make the community pay for the cleanup, and we would be responsible for it, and it would pretty much right now, you can have no liability on the polluter. This would force the polluter to have to clean, clean up in public agencies, so this is one of the US Senate put this through, so this would be another letter of support with, uh, the different senators that put this through and, uh, and Congressmen to try and, uh, hope that this passes.
Isn't this just refunding circle?
Hmm?
Isn't it just refunding circle in a different manner?
Kind of, yeah. But this will basically state out that it's on the polluter to pay as opposed to the community, so this would be, let's say PFOS comes through and they say, uh, all right, G-Pod is responsible for this cleanup, and then that would be it, we would have no option other than litigation, and if litigation says, like, we are, uh, kind of, uh, immune to be, have to pay, it would be on us, and this would automatically put it into place, whoever's the polluter is the one responsible.
How do you know who the polluter is?
Polluter. Well, you know, but we kind of, we kind of know where PFOS originates from, so there are, I mean, there are like a couple of companies that you can, you know, go after. Because, and we can, you can discuss that next time, but I'm just bringing it up, that one came out today, so we can, I'll send all the information that we can look at for the next meeting to see if we wanna send letters of support in for that.
Okay.
Or if you are interested now, because I'm not sure when they're voting on this, uh.
Well, I know why we wouldn't want to support that.
Since they said.
I think it's a good thing that's the one.
Yeah. Bye.
Yeah, they said they would like us to support now, and they gave a list of all the senators, so this is probably something that's coming up soon.
We gotta wait.
Uh-huh. Ready those.
Yeah. Now we have the operations managers report.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, Adam.
Yeah.
I was looking at Alexis, threw me off. But I know who you are.
Yeah, so, um, operation report for February. Um, I'll bring it up since we have a public comment about the, um, disinfected byproducts, um, so that, basically what that means is that, you know, we, we, we test those, uh, quarterly, um, but the drinking water standard is based on a long-term running average, so even though we had, we had good detections, state looks at as, you know, a long-term run average of those disinfected byproducts, and they do occur in the system occasionally, especially in the winter time, we do have lower flows, um, towards the end of our, end of our system, um, though we thought, you know, we, we're going to stay on that, we're, you know, doing measures we can, we start flushing that area to make sure we have, you know, additional flow going through those areas when we have low demand. Um, moving on from that, um, just had a standard report, um, obviously, something is, is forward, kind of that before, um, our production numbers, you know, on, on par with, um, previous years at this time, same with our, uh, uh, gallon per capita per day. Um, summary field activities, you know, it's kind of a, uh, it's kind of a slower period this time of year with, you know, with the rain, it's hard to get larger construction projects done, um, so we're just doing some maintenance, you know, there's, you know, involved a little infrastructure projects, valve projects, valve exercising, um, things, things of that nature, um, slowly getting ready for season, we can get, you know, data, get on the canal as we can. Um, we've been, you know, repairing crib balls, those kind of things, getting ready for season, and can repurpose one of our buildings up in the yard up here if you can repurpose it as a irrigation shed building, so we have all irrigation supply, so it's, um, it'll be pretty handy um, for the, for the crews. Um, kind of standard and moving through the operations here, um, we in the capital improvement, um, program, uh, program, we'll kind of talk about that when the staff report's coming up. Um, I think the most recent, up-to-date one, the distribution tank coating, we had our, we had inspections, uh, last week, so we're expecting the reports back so we can get a clear picture of what our people look like to get those tanks or tank coated this year. Um, mass meters, we have them ready, we're just kind of, we have, we have parts fully kind of waiting on some, on clear weather, so we actually get in there, actually do the work. Public station, talk about that, um, upcoming, um, same thing moving forward there, um, do that, you know, um, so moving to, uh, general activity, um, working on this in general, the capital improvement projects, um, the cow fire grant, so we, we obviously received that money, we have ordered the equipment we talked about, um, last, last period, last, uh, meeting. The FEMA reimbursement, it seems like it's, it's ongoing and ongoing, um, so road pair we did last year, it's still in review, we're still waiting here, here back on the final review and reimbursement for that project. Um, silver removal along the canal was part of that project as well, we need, you know, finish cleaning that up before season begins.
Hmm.
Um, the Walton Dredge Lake project, um, we're still working on that, there's just, there's a lot of moving pieces with FEMA, so it's just, yeah, still, still working and getting every piece they need to, to fund, to fund these projects. Um, move on to the USDA, uh, project, we've talked about that in the past, so the preliminary engineering report is complete, they've accepted it. Um, so that's a huge, huge milestone for that, um, the environmental permitting portion of, of that, the preliminary portion is over the next couple of weeks, um, expected going through, um, different notifications periods for, um, travel notification, um, that, those kind of like section one oh-six environmental documents, we're expecting that'll happen, um, in toward the end of May, so the money would be allocated um, beginning of June, that's, that's the goal. For that, so then at that point, we would really start my full FEMA with construction plan and construction drawing, and getting, you know, RFPs out to actually do that, do that work. Um, so next, they have paid, we're on to monthly water damage demand assessment, that's, um, pretty straightforward for this time of year. Um, so we see residential, met fifty-four gross water, you know, whole system one is ninety-four. And then moving on to the next, it goes, kind of goes to the, uh, blank page, goes to page one, um, the water resource report, we, we brought to the irrigation, um, committee meeting, we did change it since this portion of it since then, um, because it included our projections for the year, which I, I wasn't here for the, how much it was covered, but it's basically, you know, we can expect um, ten percent of the time, we have a hundred twenty-nine thousand acre feet and influence empty meadows and um, ninety-five percent of about ten thousand acre feet, we're already full. Um, so we, you know, obviously, we don't see any restrictions moving forward, um, for, for the irrigation season.
Yeah.
Um.
Before we go into the forecasting?
Yeah.
I just asked a question, we, uh, I know we have the lower usage now, we have some rain as well, and also the conservation we've, uh, dropped, and those are, uh, the two things that also affect the disin, uh, the disinfectant byproducts is one is the lower demand. Are we also treating more from any of the byproducts still from mosquito, or are we getting any more of that, cuz that's the other thing that, uh, increases that?
Um, so it was in the, it was, the detection was, um, laid to the sewer treatment plant, so we didn't, I mean, it, it was probably more related to just storm runoff, and we, we didn't get all dirt, we didn't get, um, the reservoir there clean enough, and that's why, so we do add additional chemicals to treatment process, and that can, that can cause that, yes.
Correct, all right, thank you.
So moving to the forecast we did in mid-February, um, it did show on that forecast, uh, increased temperatures, increased precipitation, um, in the short term, the long term said, uh, equal chances for precipitation and increased temperature, so we kind of um, summarize at the bottom that, you know, that's kind of on average what we see, so we don't, doesn't, the forecast doesn't show a lot of more, um, an increased chance of precipitation moving into, in the season, so um, right now with, uh, the snow pack, with, this is a little outdated, we just had the recent storm. That said, um, a lot of the recent storms, so the real major snow impact was, you know, five thousand feet and above. Um, we did have some at our, our reservoir, but it wasn't, it wasn't significant like we thought it was, it was originally calling for, you know, twelve to eighteen inches in Georgetown. We got a dusting, so, um, just to take that into account, so really understanding that where our watershed is compared to, you know, higher in the series, they got a significant amount. Um, so I think what it really in terms looks at is like, you know, we, uh, we may not have as much runoff as it, it kind of seems we'll have, so that's why, so you could see, we, if depending on the season starting, we could either use our, our reserve earlier or later, and that's kind of what, what we're trying, trying to refine, and I think we'll have a better idea come um, the next meeting, just, you know, when we're gonna actually start a, start a reserve, so we have that long-term, if we have a drought here next year or someplace, we need to make sure we're set up for a couple of years, cuz you never know, like, obviously, we see the weather fluctuations there, you know, up and down, that's the most. Um, and moving on to the next one, that's Alexis President's next report, um, kind of what we saw just currently, I don't know, we'll top to the, the first page there.
Uh, the only thing I really found interesting or important was they're projecting that we go into a neutral for the, the Inzo, it's the El Nino, El Nino swing for, what, the next couple of months, April through June, and then they're saying that it's looking like we're gonna just instantly flip right into an El Nino, and historically, that's when we kind of get snow back to like normal of November, December area, and then we kind of just have rain and a few dustings in January and February, so I just, I found that one interesting, and then, uh, if you look at rain chart, actually nineteen and twenty were considered neutral uh, Inzo events, and then the Nino fell under twenty-two, twenty-one, so you can kind of see our rainfall during the Nino was like September, October, November, we're, we're doing pretty good. But again, it's just an estimate, we won't really know until we get closer to that June, August timeframe of it going back to the Nino. Yeah.
Yeah, so I think, uh, just bringing that home was, you know, what we just kind of leaned to was the thirty-out day outlook kind of changed from mid-September, September, uh, February to now, um, but the really ninety-day outlook hasn't, hasn't changed, I think that's kind of the seasonal shifts that Alexis is referring to for, for sure. So, it's really it for, uh, first point.
Any more comments, questions?
Basically, yeah, that's the.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Nick.
Um, are they, Taylor Mine ditch crib, do you really put wood, wood down in there? Rather than make something that's gonna last longer?
We just coat them sometimes till they don't reach us down, but.
Yeah, we do use wood, and that, that's a seasonal, you know. Yeah, but we do use wood on crib balls, yeah.
Okay, and then, um. Meters that we sent back that we're supposed to get results from, when we ended up that?
And now they're resulting in a meter. Well, I mean.
Beatings.
What's that?
Beatings.
Well, I think.
It's been months.
Yeah.
So. It has been months, and I, I think, it's, I know you guys keep asking me where's answer, where's answer, and I. It's not, it's not the contractor, it's actually manufacturer trying to answer from, and those, and so I know we, we discussed about AMI stuff we did last year, we just received that material twelve months later. Meters we ordered twelve months ago, we have, then, we've received, um, six of the eight master meters, two still. Um, new meters we order six, eight months out, and it's, I know it's, I know it's not what you want to hear, but it's, it's.
These were the ones that were.
I know.
Questionable, and that you sent back to, they were supposed to do some, some testing on them to find out was it the meter failing or what was the problem?
Yeah.
Um, and it still hasn't come back.
No.
And it's been a lot of months, I mean, we, we.
That was from August or September, I believe.
I think it was probably before.
Yeah.
But anyway, yeah, yeah.
I, I understand, and like, I, I hear your frustration, I'm trying to get answers, and, um, I, you know, I think the big, the big picture, the meter picture is, you know, we've, we've had a handful. Um, we replaced like thirty-eight hundred meters, you know, we've had about five or six that we found have died. You know, that's, that's gonna happen, um, but other than that, you know, overall, we get, we do data downloads every, after every building cycle, we do a day, a lot of data downloads, you know, customers question. In ninety-nine percent of the time, there is a leak somewhere.
No, I, I understand what you're saying. Uh, it's just if they would have been a little. Better on the install and, and living up to their contract, it probably wouldn't have been so critical that they. Respond a little better. Um, you know.
What he's trying to say is it's not Ferguson who we're trying to get answers from.
I get it, but it's all one of the big contracts that, and Ferguson should take some kind of, of. Uh, lead on this to get that.
They don't, they don't, we, we send them to the manufacturer. The manufacturer is the one who, who's gonna test Ferguson. They, they, they can't really get involved in that.
I mean, I mean, they're involved, but the, the scale is so large. I mean, this Neptune is a company that's, you know, producing. Probably hundreds of thousands of meters and I, I, I completely understand the frustration. I'm, I'm trying to get answers and trying to understand, you know, you know, where.
Yeah, because we would have known like, say, say roughly Ferguson has had failures in their contract. Now this company has given us failures also. Well, they never, they never lived up to their contract.
Yeah, but they also gave us, they gave us money back.
Yeah, but you had to beat them for that. But that's what I'm saying is we had. Well, you know, it, you had to point it out that, hey, you guys aren't installing them like you're supposed to with the notifications and all this other. Uh, stuff. I mean, they were, we had to point it out to them. They didn't come up and say, hey, yeah, our contractors screwed up.
You caught it, so they made it right.
Yeah.
Was your question.
Yeah.
Was yours about the meters?
No.
Can I ask a question about the mirror? And well, two things. I was under an impression, I think, that the meters. The batteries were not field replaceable. Okay, that's what I thought I remembered. Was Cherie's meter, was that battery related?
Um, I'm assuming it was, it was dead.
It was dead. So did you, did I understand that if the battery died, it would turn off in a mode that would not. Cause a reading to show excess usage?
Yeah. So in, in that case, um. We were able to still get a download from it.
Yeah.
But we couldn't see, we couldn't get an actual reading from it. Um, like on, on the screen. So we had, and it stopped recording on a certain day. And it just stopped recording. Um, and then we just, you know, use that to that, for that billing period. Um, and then, you know, started anew. Um, the erroneous uh thing she mentioned was, you know, it was actually a Claire, Claire on her side. We put the wrong read, new read in it. Created a higher spike. It wasn't the actual meter.
Oh, it wasn't the actual meter. So it was, okay, cause you said it would stop.
Yeah, just.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't cause the customer a, a, a aberration in their payment. Okay.
It would stop reading altogether.
Yeah, and last question was, um. Six failures out of thirty-eight hundred.
Yeah.
It's a point one six percent. That's. Nothing.
Yeah.
So.
I, I mean, I know there's been, I know there's been issues, but I mean, I, I think, you know, overall, it's been, I think the hardest challenge is actually. Getting those reads.
Uh huh.
Getting those reads is getting them into Water Smart and getting the right notifications. That's actually been the hardest part, making sure it works through Tyler, works through Neptune. Works through Water Smart. That's actually what takes the most time. You know, we're down to um eight to ten hours of reading the entire system now. You know, our, our reader goes down, down. It's really, I mean, it's efficiency, what we've made up from those. Manual bi-monthly reads compared to, you know, these kind of little glitch, glitches here. I don't, I mean, the comparisons aren't, they're not even close.
Hmm, no. Thank you, Director Saunders.
I'll just go on over that.
Well, wait, I have a, a, oh, a question, okay. Are they pretty good every, when you have one that's broken and you, you send it to them and then they send you back, send you a replacement?
Yeah, I mean, it take, like, so. The Ferguson rep that we, that works with, that we work with, he, he always has meters on order.
Yeah.
Um, and some, he can sometimes is, if we have a small amount, he'll, once we say we have some, he'll give us those ones within a couple of months. But some of them, we sent, um, I think we sent a handful back two months ago. We're supposed to see three of them in March. We're not supposed to see another, the rest of them until July.
Wow.
Yeah.
But you got a stockpile of some on hand.
We, we, we did order about thirty of them in July. We have those. They're, I feel they're gold, you know.
If they're people blocked up. Meter question?
Uh, a couple of things. Meter question, um, are the two inch meters available for new constructions that require the. Fire sprinklers in, in the, in the new buildings?
They're actually one inch meters, but yes, we do have some.
Okay, so there, it's a one inch.
Typically, it's a one inch. If you, I mean, if it's a larger project, yeah, you'd go, but typical residential.
Even with the new fire. Um, and also just to comment on the picture here, there's a picture of a new uh replacement of a water, uh ditch water line. That was next door to me and the landowner was real pleased with how it was done and. Great, great job. And like you say, it's something that needed to be in the off season because Virgination does start for a few more months. Positive feedback.
Director Saunders was a non-meter question.
Yeah, I'm just going over just the um. Just the overarching thing with the forecasting and it's a requirement for uh, that's the look at our water shortage contingency plan. So this is all the previews and we have to put it in layman's term, which basically means that. So far, the projections look like we'll be able to operate normally with waters. So there's no restrictions for anybody. And that's basically what we're looking at and how we'll populate the reserves before we declare a normal water year. So. Thank you for all the data and all of this stuff. And I know it's uh, continuing that irrigation community is looking at this and get your recommendations as well.
That's our trigger date for the community.
Uh, any more questions, comments from the board? I will now open it up to the public. Hopefully Mr. Dowd remembers his question.
Oh, yes. No, that was all.
No, I just added and helped with the forecasting on his. So I dropped it off my report and we smushed it together on his.
Okay, so it all kind of. Okay, and then GM report, okay. Sorry, hang on to that, Steve, I gotta.
We had fifty-three routine inspections. Ask girls are picking up. We had eight last month. Um, we got one new start to finish. Completely done, finished. Um, build. So we're back to, if you go to the top, we went from nine oh one lots to nine oh two. Um. We, let's see, I had my annual zone report turned in February first. Uh, our sequoia's no still February first. And then our water diversion and youth report. Again, the first, uh, Brian and I got to attend a new septic training course from Elgin. It's on a sand filter system. It was actually a really interesting little class we went to, hoping it can maybe take the place of some of the. Unbuilt lots that have to use a mound. It looks like it's gonna be pretty comparable and then way smaller footprint for a system. Um. We had almost eleven inches of rainfall, ten point nine three. And we did go slightly over our monthly um discharge. I think it's seventy-two and some change. We're at seventy-four. But I mean, in the last two months, we had plenty of rain, so. And then I already did weather, so.
Sand filter versus mounded pushing it through sand.
Right, it's different, but the way this new, they call it a geo-filter sand, a geo, geotextile sand filter. It's, you can build it the same way as a mound. So if you have really not good perccable soil, you can build up your mound. And you can do these um that are almost trenchless. It's kind of cool. It's this weird little. Chunk of fabric basically that they put plastic in between and you can put your leach lines directly on top of it and it's supposed to. Take away, yeah, take away from having to put so much sand.
So they're not pressured there.
Yeah.
Like a, a.
Both. I think they were doing pressurized and just regular perforated. But it's definitely, I gotta look a lot more into it before we do anything. But Next Gen is a big um. Company and they do some mostly commercial, but they built some of the systems for homeowners and ALP. They are. Sistering with Elgin. So they've got engineers and all sorts of minds on it, but. We'll see. It was exciting though.
Nothing triggering the state for discharge with the spill?
No. Um, not that I know of. I haven't gotten anything.
Until they watch this video.
Not till now.
Thirty days in one minute.
Now. General managers.
Yeah, mine would be super short and sweet. Everything is there. Um, just a couple of things. I'm starting to work on the federal and state appropriation process. So uh, that state is due the fifteenth of this month. And uh, federal is due kind of varying, but at the end of the month and then in April. Um, what I'm applying for currently is money for putting the hydro on the bottom of Stumpy. Um, we're trying to vet to make sure that that's gonna be within their. Excuse me, within their uh accounts, but that's what we're asking for. Um, likely gonna ask for five million dollars to do that. Um, other than that, you can see the nice photo of myself, Director Saunders and Director Seaman. Uh, along with some other representatives from uh Mountain Counties, uh Water Resource Association. Um, but we did get a chance to support Senator Gill. Um, and it's kind of timely that this was a, we were able to support her. Uh, check on the wall. Uh, we have an item on later on in the agenda to spend some of that money. So we are going to let her know that uh we thank her very much for it. That's my whole report.
Thank you, any. Open it up to the general public, uh, Mr. Dowd's eagerly waiting.
My question was, my, no. Senator that sponsored that bill?
It's California Senator Padilla.
And which, which one, the Leamark one or the second?
Maybe the other one.
The second one, there's a, there's a whole bunch of um. Well, we're actually targeting the people who will vote on it. So it's a whole list from Senator Schumer and both sides. That will uh send letters to to make sure that this is important for.
Okay, and then um Adam. About that uh stuff with the chemicals, uh, you said it was mostly down at the Sweetwater Plant?
It would be actually the next one, yeah. We test everywhere.
Yeah.
But that, yeah.
Concentrated.
Yeah, yeah, there's kind of this one long end run at the end of the system as well. And we've, and. We've had, we haven't had the problem uh recently within the last five years, but historically it has been. We, we address it when it comes back.
Yeah.
You'll remember, okay. Cherie?
Yeah, we're gonna have.
Yeah.
Dana?
Um, so you're saying, okay, I wondered why it's seventeen hundred and then one part said ninety-two percent.
Yeah.
On Sunday, okay.
Yes, when you swap a meter, you have to put the whole range every day.
So you think the meter just died?
The meter is dying.
Okay, even though there was thirty-three cubic feet on one day that I probably wasn't even know. You don't think it could have winked?
No.
Cause I don't know where I got thirty-three on one day. So, and then my other question on the Tay, uh Taylor mine ditch. Where that generally located?
Yeah, uh, kind of runs Jason and Gray by my mind.
Oh, down this way. And is it cedar boards, you're saying?
Well, that, in that case, it was duck bird.
There's a male guy that entered it in male cedar. He might have scraps and then shorter pieces.
Now close to. Public section, uh, comment section. Thank you. Now, we'll open it up for. Action items. That'd be a good sign. How many pages?
Uh, so we had a rate in here. Uh, we had a, a committee meeting on the second Tuesday.
The third Tuesday.
No, that, I think we.
We moved it.
Oh, you moved it. That's right. Cause they screwed me up. So yeah, the third Tuesday of February. Uh, we had um a public outreach given to the um. To the, a committee to look at and, and, and respond to. We did have kind of a. How, how do I put it? Uh, well, one lengthy and. Uh, I can't remember how a good word for that one. But anyway, where we were trying to have this discussion about the reason for having irrigation running twenty-four seven. You know, we keep beating these, the customers twenty-four seven, twenty-four seven. Um, and we found that. Um, we had somebody in the committee who doesn't run twenty-four seven because they believe they're above, they're below a pond and they don't have to. And um thankfully Alexis is there and she said, uh, yeah, that was one of my first uh. Uh, jobs and I was over there for weeks cleaning that line because there was so much silk built up. Because the uh, uh, water isn't being used like it's supposed to be used twenty-four seven. Um, so I think to me, it sort of told us, we need to really put some kind of a outreach on. Educating people to um, to use their water twenty-four seven, not to just, oh, I have a pond up here. So I don't have to do it. I can leave it off overnight or whatever, because it does have an effect. And they keep believing because they have that sort of pond to give them that space of, you know, where it will rise and fall. That it doesn't affect the whole system or have a negative effect on the whole system like we have had where ditches overflow. Uh, and causes damage to other people's property. So I think, you know, um, we'll, we'll be chatting about that at our next meeting. I'm done.
Thank you, Director Seaman. Question, is there? Is there anything you could say in discussion about when the season's gonna start?
We are proposing.
That's what they'll propose at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, but there's some, some, basically leaving it at May first with the potential of going to May fifteenth. Those are the two days we have in discussion, not you first.
Uh, in the next meeting, March nineteenth?
Oh, yes, the next meeting in March nineteenth, two P M, B, the, your, be square.
Finance Committee, Andy Fisher is chairman. Uh, Director Stoll, would you like to comment on that good meeting we had? Or, or Nicholas, would you like to?
I'll defer to the director if he'd like to go.
I'd have to go back and look at my notes, so.
So most of the meeting was to discuss the budget. Um, so we did, as over the salaries and the wages for the budget. I would say that was uh ninety percent of the meeting. I, I don't have much update beyond that. You are going to see their next. Uh, stake. Um, there was no recommendations to change anything in the budget, but I imagine they're going to pass it in. But when we do the, the departmental expenses that we coming to them with.
Hmm. This, I, I, I was really impressed by the contributions and the questions and, and, and the entire meeting, it just went really well. How about you, Director Seaman?
It was very well attended, invested, knowledgeable, the. The commitment and of everybody there. It was very, very professional.
Hmm.
Meeting. I was impressed.
Hmm, yeah, me too. So thank you, Mr. Fisher and, and uh committee members for the finance committee. And how long did it last?
Seventeen hours.
Forty-five minutes.
Yeah.
Say that again?
Yeah, it was.
I can start coming to those meetings if you'd like.
Yeah, it was, it was, uh, it was good. I just thought I'd. Comment and, and the next meeting will be March twenty-eighth, uh, three thirty P M. Uh, ADHAC Committee for Policy. Um, Board Liaison, Saunders and Seaman.
And so if you think uh, the back and forth we have here is anything compared to a policy committee meeting. So uh, we're still going through the, we're still going through the, the ones that we try to get, uh, the review update and amend where we have little um. Things to uh adjust on previous policies and those will come on consent calendar. So anything we put on consent will be like a. Maybe one or two like changes of a. Very small changes, like a word would change here, district here, the, anything that's substantial, like the uh change we're making with the uh board vacancy things. That will go on the actual action items when it's uh something that's changed significantly from before. So some of the next ones we know coming up are pending is the um. So some of the next ones we know coming up are, uh, pending is the, um, what we talked about, the board vacancies. I know we still have out there the, um, Sequel one, and I know coming back should be the, um, records retention, which we talked about, which will make sure we have the, uh, meeting minutes and, uh, YouTube and all of that will be in there. So those are the ones I know we're reviewing now. And if it lasts.
I'm following up.
Okay, and, uh, is there a necessary meeting?
Well, we meet like almost every two weeks when we can, so we just keep going through whenever we're free, so.
Okay, so. Uh, next.
One's there.
It doesn't say. Uh, Ad-Hoc Grant Writing Committee meeting.
Yeah, I think we, we reported since we had our previous one, so the next one's bigger.
Yeah, we, we had our last one in February, so no updates.
No updates.
And just getting on emails, there's still some additional funds for the, um, Infrastructure Investment Act. Create opportunities for.
Thank you. And then we have, uh, Ad-Hoc Labor Negotiation Committee meeting is necessary and kind of beat that one to death today.
Nice, moving on.
Moving on. Yes, um, and now we're ready for any, uh, board member comment. Any of those committee me- meetings, I think we already.
Well, actually, your Labor Negotiations Committee had nothing to do with today.
Well.
That's a separate committee.
What we were talking about.
Let it go, could you?
They, but board's already interacted on these.
Okay, public comment.
The Ad-Hoc Committees meet all, all three of these.
They meet, we meet online.
Oh.
Or Lance's.
Okay, not here. Okay, thank you. We're here.
Close public comment. Session. Um, now.
Yeah.
We will open the action items. Section, item A, consider authorizing a professional service agreement for EMCOR for installation of backup generators at the district pump stations. Not to exceed one hundred and forty thousand.
But this is the, what I previously mentioned, this is the exciting one. Um, we get to spend other people's money. Um, this project will provide four backup generators, um, for various locations throughout the district that when power goes out, uh, we are unable to provide water to specific homes. And so I will just kind of note, we had a town hall meeting at the, uh, Auburn Lake Trails, uh, Homeward Association. There is a location where this is affected, uh, one of the sets of five houses on top of a hill above where, uh, uh, give me the name of the tank I, but can't.
Angel Camp.
Angel Camp tanks, drawn, drawn like there. Um, there's five houses that live above that tank, and so we have to boost water to get to those houses. We have a pump. Uh, if P G D does a power safety shut off, or we run out of, we lose power due to a disaster or other, uh, uh, thing, they don't get, they don't get water. So the Senator gave us the money to pursue this and, uh, now we're installing these. And so my comment was that at the A L T, uh, Town Hall, one of the cut- affected customers asked if they were, if we were ever gonna do anything to fix this. And, you know, I'd just like to note that we heard that customer. We, uh, we heard the, the concern and we've done something now and hopefully this will be resolved to not happen to them again. So, uh, if you have any questions, uh, myself or Adam can, can take them. This is also being done just to note through our, uh, procurement policy contracting, um, cupca is what it's, uh, affectionately known as. So the bidding was done through that process of, of the cupca process.
Thank you. I have a question for Adam. Could you provide me with, if you have that, uh, constituent's name?
Uh, offline. Do not give that name.
Yeah, offline, uh, so that I could, uh, uh, let him know.
But, yeah, I can, I actually saw him out at, at the, um, for, for something else I was working on. I actually, I did talk to him.
Yeah, and I'd like to put a little blurb in the, uh, community chat of, of G PUD's, uh, follow through with his, uh, about a year ago, it's been since we had that public forum. Thank you. Go ahead, Director.
Oh, it says on here, they're gonna provide the drives and everything to the district for permitting. We get the permit or they get the permit? And is the cost included in there?
Yes, cost included. They get the permit.
Okay. And what about, uh, warranties? I see you mentioned that on these.
Well, whatever the manufacturer warranty on the generators would be here, but they're not Mac Trandler. So it's similar to like what we've done here or Walton Lake. They would have those manufacturing warranties.
Right, but you know how long it is, like three years, five years?
I do not know. I have to see one thing for, provide the specs and actual, I mean, they gave us the, the size of the generator.
Right.
Um, breach location, but they haven't got to that point where they're, um, done and done, I said.
Okay, and on the propane tanks, you're gonna, uh, are we gonna lease those tanks or purchase them outright? There you go.
No taxes. No taxes, right?
And no taxes.
Yeah, we, we flooded it.
I think, I think it makes sense, you know, how much they operate, that we don't need to have them there.
Well, the, the problem that we've experienced up here is that when the weather's really bad and you release and only that one company can come fill your tank. Okay, and that one company can't get up there? And then that frees you up so that you can get somebody that can get up there. Not to mention the fact that, um, the propane, you can get a lot cheaper if you own your own tank and you do some shopping around. So, I mean, that's, they're expensive, right? He'll pay for himself real quick.
Well, we do have a good relationship with our propane supplier now and they are, they actually have device on the tanks. They get alert and they know, especially our tree oil plants, they know like that's, that takes priority. You know, because you have to keep that little more to not have any freezing issues inside. And this will be, would be this kind of simple case, you know?
Yeah.
But, yeah.
Well.
Yeah.
One, one's for heat, one's for generations. Oh, yeah.
Just a priority level, I guess.
Any other directors? Like to open this up this time for public comment question?
Yeah, uh, how much are these generators gonna cost? And are they secured, uh, up on a slab with the wheels off? Are they, they're not towable? Are they?
No, they're permanent. They're not gonna go.
Okay, yeah.
They're like those Generac, Generac ones you see all over.
Yeah.
There's commercial grade.
Right.
And he answered the question, propane, that's good. Well, how much, how much are they?
Um, well, the total, so how the bid structure was, they did a bid package for each location. So that includes, um, drawings, generator, propane installation. So it was a line item about exactly what actually it was costing.
They all gonna be the same?
They're a little different because the demands are different in the fluctuations.
And one of them's three phase and one of them's single phase. So there's, there's different, there's different nuances. So you can't say each one of them is gonna be X dollars because of the needs. Some of them are getting more expensive than others.
Something else is paying for them, right?
Yep, that, we already got the money. Actually, that's one that's in, that checks in the bank.
That one?
Yeah. You always ask about that, so that check's already there.
How many different locations?
Four.
Four.
Uh, and one's in A L T and the others are somewhere else?
Uh, Adam would have better.
Just ones in A L T.
Irish Lane, Black Ridge, Angel.
Yeah, it's listed in there.
Did you read that?
I might have to tap into that generator.
You're a lot, it's a lot, it's a lot.
Takes some serious extension cords, yeah. And I, I want to run into trees.
Now that kind of answers it. If we didn't hear about it at the town hall, but the request for gen- was that already something you were all working on?
Um, yeah, we've been, this has been on our air for a long time.
Long time, yeah.
So we, we, our original plan was to buy portable generators and if we had an emergency to drive one out there. So now we don't, we have, we have this extra kind of nuance that we don't even have to go out there. It's all gonna be automatic. It's just gonna kick on, just like your house. Uh, how, home generator, if you, you know, if you have a home generator, it's gonna kick on when the power goes out. So we don't even have to respond if, if, you know, unless there's an emergency.
Thank you. Uh, go ahead, Sherry.
I actually submitted this to the board five years ago when E I D got their grants and turned it into Steve Palmer and, you know, go after these grants for the, nothing. Anyway, um, because this is a grant. That's just a comment.
No, no, I would just.
Okay.
I'll tell you guys a compliment.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, cause we got.
Well, it's in the meeting.
Thank you, Sherry.
Yeah, that was a good thing. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, because this is money from a grant that R F P doesn't show up on our website.
Uh, it's a different process of R F P for this one. So like I said, this is through the, uh, Uniform California Contractors Association. They, they're, they kind of prebid these. So a bunch of companies come together and just send us the totals that, that's.
It's an informal bidding process under the California Uniform Cost Destruction Public. And for projects that are two hundred thousand or less, you're allowed to do it. It's expedited process under the Public Contract Code.
Right. Yeah. So my question is, is there a place on the website since you've kind of taken away the the R F P part because of the bid direct company doing it? Kind of make another slot for, you know, past bids, past projects? There's something in there about past projects. That we used to have.
This, this goes to companies who have registered.
Yeah, I mean, you buy for trucks and there's all kinds of stuff that you go through. The county has just fine crap with the other things. Yeah, so anyway, it would be nice to see on the website. And propane tanks, um, there's a nice sound in the one, uh, Colorado propane prices. Like, or how big are they?
Uh, true.
Yeah, sixteen hundred dollars you got them for sale and it's son has a company. But it looks like signatures and giving up.
Okay.
And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll close public comment section. Um, can I get a motion from the board?
I move that we approve the contract with EMCOR for design and installation of the emergency generator.
One second. All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Action item nine B, consider approval of dump truck purchase and C I P amendment not to exceed hundred twenty-five thousand.
Uh, so I'm gonna take a little bit of this, uh, Adam's gonna take a little bit of this. So I gave a little bit of background at the last meeting that one of our, uh, units, unit seventeen, which is also known as nineteen ninety GMC Topkick, uh, has been we'll call it fading. Um, there's been, uh, about seventeen thousand dollars in work that has been done to it over the last, I want to say eighteen months or so. Um, we have identified the need to replace this piece of equipment. Uh, what we're asking for here is to replace it with a ten-wheeled dump truck. Um, this would provide additional, uh, storage, additional usage for, uh, obtaining material, uh, additional towing capacity, uh, being able to tow with material and with the new equipment. Um, so one of the reasons we would like to have a piece of equipment like this is because we have the two pieces of equipment that are coming from the other grant, the CalFire grant, uh, an excavator and a skid steer, which the excavator comes in at approximately, I want to say it's twenty-two thousand pounds. Um, and so we recently purchased a, a trailer to replace the twenty thousand pound trailer. So we have a thirty thousand pound trailer. So we can, uh, bring this excavator throughout the district. Um, by utilizing a ten-wheeler, we can bring a load of material with it, so we don't have to make multiple trips. Uh, you can read through some of the, um, other things that we have within here that we are going to be able to use this to pick up, uh, material from the quarry as needed, uh. Let me see. We had looked at, uh, a few different classes of truck. We looked at class six, seven and eight. Uh, class six is considered what, uh, medium duty, single axle. Uh, that would be similar to, uh, uh, the, the Topkick without air brakes. Excuse me, class seven is very similar to that Topkick with air brakes. And then the class eight is your, uh, you know, very common dual axle, um, uh, dump truck that you see driving through a rear axle. Yeah, oh, sorry, two tandem rear axle. Yes, you're correct. I apologize. Uh, the class eight truck, um, we are proposing would be no more than one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. We do have a parameter. Uh, we are not gonna be able to buy a new one for that cost, so the, we are looking at used vehicles. Um, we have twenty-twelve, which is, these are all car rules, so twenty-twelve for the year and two fifty for the mileage, two hundred fifty thousand miles. Uh, I would like to keep it, you know, newer and less miles than that. Um, we have kind of looked around at, at different options that we have that have become available. And you can see an example of some that have come available and the costs that are associated with those. Um, you can see that we can get, uh, for example, a Freightliner twenty-seventeen with sixty-eight thousand miles came available for seven, a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. Um, there's also been, uh, lots of, uh, 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 internationals that have come available. Um, so these are, these are, these are out there. We have to look for one. Nothing is gonna be purchased tomorrow. We are going to, you know, find when the next one is available. Now, to pay for this, we have money that is in a surplus account that we would like to utilize just to pay for this. So approximately, uh, I, 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 we did purchase something out of the surplus account. We're gonna be putting money back in the surplus account from, from the, uh, uh, consent calendar item. Um, we were, we have approximately fifty thousand dollars. And that would include the sale of the, the Topkick as well. So the additional si- fiscal impact would come from the, uh, C I P. We have kind of arranged or rearranged some items within the C I P. We could do it under the infrastructure, uh, building that we discussed earlier. There's a, there's numerous projects that will likely, um, be completed. And you can kind of see the breakdown of where we want to include this in here, uh, for purchase. And again, if we approve this, we'll be approving, uh, kind of a shuffling of the C I P money and it comes out less again than we originally, um, have it in the docket for, uh, to spend in the C I P. So we're, we're gonna be spending less money than we originally approved, even if we do approve this, this vehicle. Uh, I guess if Adam, if I missed anything, go ahead and add in. If not, um, if you have any questions, Adam may have to jump in for some of the more technical stuff. He's been doing a lot of the research.
Um, so you're, you're putting almost like a tractor trailer up on those old, uh, roads. Having this big of a, of a, of a truck and that big of a trailer hauling that kind of equipment in. Are the roads even gonna be able to hold or maintain? Or are we gonna be tearing those up as we're going up there to, uh, deal with those? You know, cause that's probably realistically where those equipments gonna be used mostly. And if we're gonna have those.
I was gonna answer your question. Sorry, I wasn't sure you were done. I apologize.
So, um, yeah.
I was gonna answer your question. I, I thought you were, I, I jumped, my brain jumped in before I, my mouth.
Yeah, because, because, you know, like mosquito fire, you're gonna be running up there with, you know, doing a lot of work up there and stuff. Um, so that's was my concern is you're putting that extra big truck with, you're now putting up, what, fourteen givi guard? Of, of.
About ten, they're about ten givi guards.
Either way, it's a lot of weight that's gonna be rolling up through there versus, um, having that smaller piece of equipment going up.
So it'd be less than a, a logging truck? If you're asking about the dirt roads.
Yeah.
Be less, less, less weight than the logging trucks. Um, and the goal of this misch- this is not to drive. Uh, it may be correctly about wrong, but the goal is not to drive on those roads with loads. It's to get the loads to there. And then we have the newer, smaller dump truck that's going to kind of shuffle this material in and out as needed. So it's not, we're not, I don't think I'm gonna advocate for driving this dump truck, you know, deep into the woods where we're trying to do some of this work. It's to get the material to the job sites.
And then what would be cheaper to have the transfer come up and dump, dump the load, which will give you twice as much or significantly less money?
So due to the cost that he charges us and a, uh, he charges an hourly rate to do that, we would save, uh, a significant amount of money by not doing it through him, by doing it ourselves.
Hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars?
So he, when he charges a hundred and fifty dollars an hour.
Right.
So and so it's 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 two hours.
Yeah, so. For up country, your question about up country, so you have, you have access road down to the levee road, right? And those access roads are um, always used by logging trucks. So those, those roads are actually pretty improved. Um, this size of truck would not, no logging truck, no dump truck, no goes on actually levy roads. A levy road is too narrow. So it's always, they always design, when they haul, they haul to a point, we bring rock in, like we just did all that rocking after we, all the transfers went to. Um, two locations and then we use smaller dumps from there to get it to where it needed to be. Um, the response like your, the hourly rate question, so. For an actual transfer up to there, you're looking at about five hour turnarounds. That's a hundred few dollars an hour for. Uh, transfer, by the time they go to port and go up there. So it's, yeah, it's just a little more time. Like, we're, we're kind of mentioning to to this office here is a little less time. For the load. Yeah, so. You asked a question.
What? Next. You call me Victor Sonnen?
Well, that's a good one.
As both Adam and and Rick jokes, we've been going round and round about this for a long time. Uh, I I don't think, in my personal opinion, uh, is I don't think that we should be spending that much money on a, on a ten wheel dump truck for a variety of reasons. Uh, I'm I'm glad that finally somebody's. Entertaining the idea of getting used ones. Um, the ten, the, the equipment that they're talking about hauling. Uh, can only be hauled by the dump trucks because the trailer that the equipment on has air brakes and the only vehicle we have that has air brakes. Is the dump truck, either what we have now or the one we're gonna get. To me, it seems pretty silly to be hauling around a trailer with a ten wheel dump truck that's empty. And it's being used as a tow vehicle. It's gonna use more fuel. It's gonna be more for maintenance. Um, to to me, that that just makes no sense. It's uh, if you get. Ones similar to the size that we have now, like a five yard one. Then that's gonna be more maneuverable. Uh, it's gonna be, I'm sure, a little bit less on fuel. And and I think that it will be more than adequate to handle the hauling needs that we need. Um, that we've discussed this issue as well. One of the issues that that dropped way back when Darryl was here. Was that they wanted a ten yard because they could haul twice as much and make half as many trips. But if you look at how many miles is on, the truck we have now is what thirty-four years old and has a hundred thousand miles on it. So it's not making that many trips. Now, I do realize that we do do, you know, a lot of stuff. Um, and but I I do not see the need for a ten wheel dump truck. To me, it just makes, to me, it makes no sense. Um, like I said, it's gonna be, you know, a tow vehicle. The truck we had now for most of its life. Was hauling around a backhoe with gravel in it, so. Uh, backhoes aren't none too light.
You know, I mean, I think, I think uh, that that vehicle, you know, back, the backhoe is about ten thousand pounds, so it is a difference. And I think it's just every time it was used was at its mechanical limits and. Not only is, you know, not only does it put the operator, operator at a safety risk because. A lot of times, so if you have like this, this, the the class seven, they have a different kind of, you know, they have a different. Kind of sometimes a different braking system. They have like a turbo brake compared to like a full Jake brake. So a full Jake brakes are typically in the class H, but you get a lot more safety factor when you're, you're hauling this kind of weight. On these kind of hills out here. And that's kind of why. That truck kind of wore out how it did is because it was always at its limit. That's what we would see. If we got another one, we would always be at its limit. And I mean, that's.
I got no complaint about that truck. It lasted thirty-four.
No, I'm not, no, I'm not saying that either. But I, I think what. Well, I kind of try to lay everything on this, in this board report here is I kind of, you know, we're, we're kind of shifting how. We do projects here, right? It was, we were kind of always kind of just maintaining and stuff. Now we're kind of looking, looking ahead where we're, you know, we're trying to take. More responsibility for our staff and our, and our talented operators to do, do this work. And this really gives them that. That the extra tool to to do that because we're doing larger projects where we could do like large piping project. We have. You know, we, we're working on that castle site and we, we see in there, you know, half of our um, distribution mains are high priority to replace. You know, we're at our, our lifespan there. So this is, this gives us that, that cost opportunity to. You know, it's, it's an upfront cost we see here buying, purchasing this, but long, long term. You know, we're gonna, we're gonna see a savings if, if we don't have, we rent, say we rent how we did Chimney Flat. That truck in a, in a cost of eight thousand dollars just to rent. Um, over that one project, that's one project and we, and we have, you know, every year we have a CIP, more water line replacements, more grant projects we're seeing. And that's, I think that's what we're looking at, you know, moving forward. Um, here at the district, we're gonna have more opportunities, larger projects and. This will help us to till, to facilitate those long term at a lower cost.
If I can address one of the comments about the mileage. I think you you stated that it would take twice as many trips. I think that was because we we didn't have doing those trips. And so that affected the amount of miles. That were put onto that truck. So, so now we have, we would have the ability to do those trips. We would be able to do that more. We would have to rely less on people coming to deliver. Do you get it when we needed it? Um, and you know, we have other vehicles that have, obviously not that old. But we, we don't put a lot of miles on our vehicles. There are some that get a lot of miles. But in the, in a general sense, we have other vehicles that are, you know. Twenty years old that only have a hundred and twenty thousand miles as well. So, so, you know, it it's an argument, but there is, there is, there's an argument that there's other vehicles as well within the fleet that, that. Kind of have that same amount of usage.
Quick question. In looking on page four or five, you're looking at different uh. Manufacturers and the models of dump trucks. What's? The need difference between a three hundred horsepower and a five hundred horsepower? How how is that relevant to this district?
I think it's relevant because you get, it like usually when you have a higher horsepower, you have a higher uh. That how it's built is just stronger. So, so comparison for, like say this two thousand twelve to two thousand seventeen. Um, has a different horsepower. See, it also has, when you have a higher horsepower, you're gonna have a higher um, weight rating for the, for the axle load. Um, that truck in particular is more designed for a uh. Uh, area like ours where it has, you know, has uh, dual steering boxes. It has, you know. A locking differential where, you know, we have um, a little different rougher roads that would fit, fit our needs better and, and it gives you that. I mean, it would just give you, it gives you more flexibility when you have more horsepower, right? So you, you don't have, if you're towing up hills or something like that, you're able to. Find it here easier and build, pull that hill better.
Does it make a difference if it's automatic or eighteen speed?
Yeah, so. It does. And so we have the two thousand, two thousand fifteen Freightliner and the two thousand seventeen, we actually rented both of those models. Um, the two thousand fif- the two thousand fifteen uh, automatic, um. It, it wasn't, it wouldn't be ideal for up here. Um. Uh, pulling the different grades up here because it's only a six speed. And I would, you know, talking to operators out there, a lot of times it was hard to find, find the right gear for going down and up hills or something here. So the, the, the manuals actually would be preferred. Typically nails have a lot more gears, so.
Because you could use it for brakes. I mean, you can have much more control over the vehicle.
Yeah, exactly. And like, um. When you get in these heavier duty um, vehicles or trucks, right? Their, their whole purpose is to be serviceable so you can have like, they're not like a car, we're kind of cars are kind of like throwaway. You know, you, they're actually made to be serviceable. So. Like, in general, you know, these. Companies typically offers like a two hundred fifty thousand mile warranty for an engine, just an, you know, sorry. So. You can see like a car typically is what a hundred thousand, so usually cars last a hundred thousand miles for you. How it would have to do anything, but. We have a really good resource here. Uh, one of our employees actually um, ran a quarry for twenty years. He took it over from his father. So he, I've been, you know, picking his brand a lot. He, you know, he had a truck where he put three, three million miles on it. You know, it was more of a hauling truck, right? It was on the freeway hauling. Um, but he's like, yeah, you know, hauling and using it every single day. And he was like a half a million miles. He would, he called it a uh, a frame on rebuild and you know, you take, you take that off, you surface it. Um, do pistons and rods and stuff like that. And that he's, that's typically what you do, you know, to make a million and a half miles where you'd actually do like a full. Full engine out and then do um, the crankshaft and those kind of parts. So, yeah.
Um, Donna kind of mentioned this, but. What percentage of the jobs? Would benefit from having a double axle versus a single axle truck?
I think, um. I think in the, in moving forward, we're gonna benefit from it. We're, we're still gonna have the, you know, the small extension line extensions where you have. Um, we're not gonna be able to use it. You know, we had a, we did a service line a couple days ago on Flora. I mean, the Flora, it's a really small road, you know. Regardless, you're gonna have to do small dump there. And that's, and that's why we have that option now. Um, but I think overall, you're gonna see. Most of our main lines, we can get to it, mo- almost all at all, all the like trails. You know, you're looking at small. Small areas, I mean, you know, some lines down Hack Millar, um. Garn Park, you know, you could use it all night. So I think you're gonna look like seventy-five percent would be able to use this. Use this truck. And then if we have the bigger projects in the, in the pipeline. It has to be a hundred percent of those projects.
And then you mentioned that the uh, Upper Canal Road is not rated for class eight. Or that, is that where the? Logging trucks go?
Um, so, so you, so there's access points down to the levee road. Those ones um, are used by logging trucks all the time. You're actually on the levee, it's so narrow. This is not, yeah.
So that's not accessible for them.
Yeah.
We wouldn't want to take it up there anyhow. That wouldn't be, uh, that wouldn't be a good space, good stop for it.
No more directory. Let, let me just make a comment. It seems to me that one of the arguments is. Safety. We're hauling equipment on the mountain roads around here, you know. The safety of having brakes, having control, especially if it's a manual transmission. Brake, you know, like a Jake brake and so on. That besides the cost benefit analysis, there's, there is a, a safety. Recommendation given the equipment that we now have that the district has not had in the past.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a really good point to bring up. And you, you talk, you talk to operators out there and that's kind of what. I mean, there is the money we've been putting into the purpose there now. Um, but it's also what I mentioned earlier, it's operating those mechanics all the time and. When you have operators telling you that, you know, they don't want it, they don't want to drive it because of that. I mean. Because they're, they're so close on the edge, you know, and, and. I understand it's, it's a large purchase. Um. It's heavier duty, uh, but that, that goes a long way when you're towing heavy equipment, you're hauling rock, you're hauling big material, you know, it's. It's just safer for everyone here. That's a really good point with this.
Well, there's the safety concern that you've mentioned, and correct me if I'm wrong, is. The difference between getting this ten wheel and the truck that you have now. If you get a newer truck. Of the size of what we have now, there's, I don't see why that would be a safety issue. It's gonna be designed, it's gonna be used for what is designed to be used. It's gonna have brakes and all that sort of thing. So I don't. Uh, and I know that you guys have told me before that our staff is concerned about driving the truck they have now and they're not. Taking it, using it to its full limits because they're concerned about safety and all that. So I don't think that that. I guess what I'm saying is, I want to make sure that everybody understands that the safety concern that they have is about the truck we have now. And not in getting a single axle instead of a, a tandem axle.
I, I think it's two part. I mean, you're still gonna be with, with the new truck. You're still gonna be at the absolute limits of it. Regardless, especially when you're hauling a, a larger piece of equipment, you're still gonna be right there. And because when you look at um, this, the second chart here after the alternative analysis. Um, you know, you, so everyone says, you know, you have, you have F four fifty, they can tow all this weight, right? You say, say you have F four fifty, you tow forty thousand pounds. But these dump trucks are designed a little different, so they have a, a large payload. So you have to look at your, your gross vehicle and your combined gross vehicle. So you get to the point like where you can have a, so this example, an F, F seven fifty, which would have air brakes. But you actually have a smaller ton. Because you're combined, you'd actually be below.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying, that's all. So here's, I think what all, all, I'm really trying to say is. We're, we're, we're trying to push the limit and. The um, the difference in the cost isn't really, if buying brand new, yeah, you're gonna pay half a million dollars for. A brand new um, ten wheel dump truck, but we're looking at used costs. We're not seeing a big difference there. I mean, obviously you can still find new stuff that's gonna, you know, if it's, if it's two thousand twenty-two, it's still gonna be two hundred thousand dollars, but. I think that's what we're trying to say, you know, we're. Uh, in this alternative analysis, cost analysis, we're, we're, we're right. We're on the brink of capacity, mechanical limits. Um, but the cost really. If you, if you were, if the cost was a lot less, it'd, it would be worth it, right? The cost is a lot less if you had a lighter vehicle, you'd be okay, but you're, the cost is the same.
Well, I'm not saying it being the same. I'm looking around at it. It's about eighty-five thousand you can get. And it was like a twenty sixteen, uh, that was eighty-five thousand, but. I, I, I think we've discussed enough. The, these guys all know how I feel about it. You guys know how I feel about it.
Yeah, yeah.
I was just uh, thinking about safety. I, I lost, my employer at the time didn't have brakes on the trailer and. I was going down Highway twenty and I didn't have any brakes. I could have been dead. You know, I, I don't know. I just. What would they have paid out in damages or, you know? Yeah, right.
People had a rough life.
Well, how old are you?
How old was I?
Yeah. That would, that would factor in how much.
How much more earning capability do you have?
My, my, my thirties, yeah.
Yeah, so you're not decent.
Yeah, I would just, I would just, it just came back.
You would have been worth more than enough.
Yeah, I was just thinking that. I almost forgot about that, but now I remember.
You're not worth much now.
If I wasn't supposed to have that city, I would have been toast. Um. Uh, open up for public comment. Uh. This uh, Mr. Dowd, you have experience in this area, right?
This is right on my alley.
Yeah.
Get the Freightliner two thousand seventeen with three axles. You're gonna need to take, you're gonna be out there, you're gonna be pulling that bigger trailer. You got the heavier piece of equipment on there. You're gonna need, you're gonna need safety and that thing will handle it. That's a two axle, you're gonna be all over the road. It'll be just squirrely. You've got that heavy trailer and, and, and even too. You might be able to get both pieces of equipment on that thing. I don't know how big that.
Trailer's not big enough for that, but.
The trailer isn't?
Yeah, it's not long, it's not long enough. Eh, I don't think so. Plus, plus I think you'd be over the limit. The excavator's twenty-two and I think the skid is like. Sixteen or seventeen.
Thousand?
Uh-huh.
Oh shit, yeah.
It's a big skid.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, get the bigger one, you'll be happy. And it'll power.
And just, and just, and just so it's clear, these four trucks are just examples. Um, but we are going to look if, or if it's approved, we will. Do some analysis and we will look within the parameters of what we're approved to do. And, and, and make the purchase based on, you know, kind of a vetting of, of what's going on through here.
And, and that sixth, uh, sixty, uh, the two thousand seventeen, sixty-eight thousand miles only had a couple of oil changes, you know. Maybe, maybe uh, three or four or five.
Yeah.
So that things know it's just broken.
So you said you have fifty thousand in the, in that one account?
It's, it's, it's a proxy, proxy. Could be more.
I could give you the guy, the guy number two once.
Do you have it?
I do have it. Yeah, so currently we have uh, thirty-two thousand. We have uh, the trailer we're selling, we probably estimate five or six for that. Um.
I think we're getting more than that.
Yeah, we should get more than that.
Well, we'll see. You never know.
I, I, it's closer to eight to ten, I think, but five to six is conservative.
Yeah, um, then we have uh, this compressor that was on the last one, then we have whatever.
Well, my question was, the fifty thousand, I was wondering if that includes the, the estimate of what you're gonna get from the Topkick when you sell that.
I think we're between forty-five and fifty-five, maybe sixty at the top end of, of whatever the circles are gonna be. So I, I tried to be a little conservative, but yes, that is included, included in the topic. Now, uh, we've analyzed. We've looked at the cost of what a Topkick will sell for and the hard, the, the hard part we have is they, they go from anywhere between six. And up to twenty. So depends on, uh, yeah, I, 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 I will do that. You wanna give me twenty?
Okay, no.
It actually does, it has an active, a, active early break.
You will be able to get it ready from California. Someone else needs to buy it.
Yeah. So, so we're, we'll get the most we can. And honestly, we've gotten, I'm sorry to cut you off, Director. Uh, we've gotten more for almost every piece of equipment that we've put on there than we've anticipated.
Yeah, you got, you got pretty well on that. I'm really glad to see that going on, so I, I say we vote.
So this resolution, we're authorizing the not to exceed up, up to twenty, hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Yes.
And, and a class eight.
That is, yes.
Before tax.
Before tax.
And the tax is included in that hundred and twenty-five, right?
What we have in here is before tax.
Before tax.
But like, like, I'll, I'll give you an example. The truck that Steve was referring to, that was one seventeen with the taxes. So we're looking to get underneath that one twenty-five.
Okay.
Uh, so we actually negotiated that one seventeen to, down to one seventeen. Unfortunately, that truck is now sold, so we don't really have, yeah. That's not an option, but we will find something similar.
Like that two thousand twelve, they actually just finally listed that one, uh, they listed it for ninety-five.
Okay.
So that would be, so it'd be probably around a hundred thousand.
And we can still work on uh getting a best price, because we pay cash and so it's a lot different.
So before a motion, you have a.
Just, just to confirm, the, the funds for this will come out of a combination of the C I P budget and surplus property.
That is correct. Surplus property first, and then whatever we have left will come out of the C I P.
And it looks like the delta would be no more than like nineteen thousand.
Yeah, kind of shifted.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's actually less though, to the less.
Yeah, to the less.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. On another.
Just a quickie, does that compare with the state's default?
Yes, anything, anything newer than two thousand twelve.
Do, do I have a motion from Director for?
Yeah, I know we've, this is maximizing the use of our surplus program, I know. Give us this truck. I know we've been talking about this. Truck for a long time, many years, so I mean, this is probably gonna be the best chance we'll have it and plus it's useful, have the air brakes. It'll allow us to go stuff in them. We can use it outside as well, so I mean. At the price we're gonna get, we'd be able to uh. Offset some of the, the red prices, I will uh motion that we approve as.
And I think the tipping point is the new equipment we have. And so, to be asked.
So, re- repeat your motion, please.
Motion to approve as staff uh, staff recommended.
With the C I P amendment.
With the C I P amendment and the uh use of the surplus.
Hundred and twenty-five, that's, that's second bill, Director Seem.
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Any opposed? None opposed, motion passes unanimously.
Mister Thornbrook. I got a little flutter in my heart right there.
There'd be no point now in there.
Yeah, he's, he's a, he's a stand-up kinda guy.
I felt that, man, that was, that was love.
Okay, uh, item C.
I figured I'd milk it for.
Years. Consider selection of water resources economics for cost of service analysis and rate study not to exceed an amount of a hundred and grand. Possible action approved resolution approving contract with water resources economics. Yeah, and you got the uh.
So we do have um Mister uh, and I'm gonna, Sanjay, I know I've, I've only ever called you Sanjay, is it Guar?
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that I understand um before I uh turn this over, so. Uh, we did put on our F P for uh cost of service analysis. We received two uh bid proposals uh for cost of service. Um, um, analysis services. We received one from N B S. Uh, and we received one from water uh resource economics. The one uh from water resource economics came in at approximately ninety-seven thousand dollars. In total costs and that does include all of the optional uh costs. The N B S. Came in at approximately one hundred and thirty thousand, give or take some of their. They kind of have some cookie cutter things that they were gonna offer us that I don't know if the district really could take advantage of. Um, in speaking with Mister Guar, we have um increased the, the. Ask or the uh amount to a hundred and five thousand and that will be to provide additional in-person services, so. Um, knowing the community and knowing that we, everyone wanna be on the same page. Um, we want to have him here in the district to go over his analysis. To discuss, you know, his findings and to allow people to ask uh questions as needed. So uh it is the staff's recommendation that we uh authorize a contract with Mister Guar. In the amount of a hundred and five thousand dollars to initiate a rate and cost of service analysis. Um, I will uh allow him to maybe say a few words on his behalf. Um, before we have any questions, so uh Mister Guar, take it away, please.
Sure, um, so um President, Board Member, Staff, Publix, my pleasure to meet you virtually here today. I look forward to meeting you in person. Um, just a little background about myself, maybe I've done um rate studies for over twenty-five years, assisted over a hundred different agencies. Um, in California. Uh, neighboring agencies close to you is um Placer County Water Agency, helped them out. Um, Eldorado Irrigation District, um, I'm working with them right now. Um, I've helped them out quite a bit. Um, yesterday I was at Shasta uh Lake uh for a city council meeting. They had a um, a pretty of a very. You know, uh, active participation by a public, very healthy discussion. Um, I also speak quite a bit at conferences. Um, I'm part of the American Water Works Association, helps set the standards of rate making. And then also I've been um expert witness on rate cases and also have defended successfully water agencies when they've gotten sued. Um, you know, designing water rates is both uh a financial. You know, we wanna make sure we get the money in the bank to make sure we pay it for this essential service. Um, it also, we need to make sure we comply with Prop two eighteen, um, the proportionality, the legal requirements. But even more so nowadays, I would argue, it's the value. What are we providing to the community? What's this service? And how do we articulate that? And how do we explain the challenges that we face with providing that service? Um, so how you talk about it, how you explain it, um, it's very critical to get the buy-in. Uh, we have our approach here, we feel like. We can do that, um, and um we've been successful in that. So if there's any questions I can answer, I'd love to hear them.
And just Mister President, if you indulge me for one more moment, um, I will just say that I have had a ten-year career of working with Mister Guar. In my previous water district, um, I can, I can speak to his professionalism and I can speak to his ability. Uh, do this work and, and he's going to do us a great service.
Um, what, why I wanna wait, cause this is ninety-seven with the option of having the in-person, so what?
Yeah, so we're uh adding additional in-person, so that's he, he's giving us two in-persons.
Yeah.
And I'm saying, in case we wanna have him for maybe like three, four, five.
Alright.
Um, it's, it's better just to have it now, so we don't have to come back for a change order in the future.
Okay, uh, now is this a time where we are gonna discuss other questions we have or?
Uh, I mean, yeah, that's my question. I, I ask whatever question you want and we'll see if it.
Well, well, one of the things I questioned is that, and, and I think uh discussed this with you, is that using the uh previous rate study.
Yes, so we're not gonna use, we're not relying on the previous rate study very much. Um, it's just there for reference, so people can go back and look and see. Where it went wrong. Um, so, so, you know, we always wanna look at what is good and what is bad in a rate, in an old rate study. So not taking it at all would be, um, I think a disservice, but we can look at it, we can analyze it, we can say, hey, this is, this is. Was really bad, this analysis was wrong. We don't ever wanted to use this and we wanna make sure we stay away from that.
And, and I think I, I also wanna point out the fact that uh, uh, that rate study actually. Determine that the rate should have been higher than they were and the board did not go with them, you know, they still went up high, but they didn't go. As, as high as that was.
And see, that's a great reason not to include it, but to analyze it and, and why it's too high, why it was too.
Right, uh, I think also that the board in the, in this proposal talks about. They're gonna be doing a data request list and staff response.
Correct.
I, I would like that the board gets to see these, these data request lists and, and responses.
So um Mister Guar is gonna be, I think, meeting with us a few times, few informational pieces. I'll probably have him attached to my board report, my, my G M report a few times virtually, so that he can, he can uh. Uh, you can understand the process as we go. This is gonna be, you know, a long-term process. And so I think having touchpoints along the way is gonna be important.
Well, one thing that in the past one was also important, I feel, is that. The, the board uh decided that, oh, well, this isn't our job, we're not gonna, but we're gonna distance ourselves, not have anything to do with it and. And that was wrong.
I would say that I have the complete opposite on that. I want the board to be very involved.
Uh, let's see, what else do I have? Uh, oh, I'm gonna look through that book, it's gonna take me a while though. Um.
Light reading.
Uh, yeah.
We, we bought a couple of the A W W M one uh rate study, analysis books and, and we're starting the, the light reading.
Yeah, and I, and I'm, I'm also a member of the committee that sets that um, um book and I've written a few, a couple of chapters in it too.
Yeah, well, I asked him, you know, I, I checked to see and it was like a couple hundred bucks or a hundred and sixty bucks and I go, I'm not gonna spend that kinda money. So uh he got me one and it's, you know, it's gonna take me a while, but thank you for getting it for me anyway. Um, we definitely, I want, you've already touched on this, but this is huge. We definitely need. The in-person workshops, not, not, um, the other thing.
And yeah, there'll be some virtual of, of this, but I would say the majority of the work will get done.
Well, yeah, the virtual could be like a between him and, and you, you guys, and he and him and us, you know, but when it comes to the public. It absolutely has to be in person.
I, I can hundred percent agree.
Okay, oh, good. Uh, let's see, perhaps if you, there, okay, we did that. Okay, we did that. I think that was, oh. Yep, that's all, that's, that's all I had. For now. Notice I left that loophole in there.
I, I don't play anything past you anymore.
Just some comments that I came up with is that I appreciate you specifically addressing the C D C, the system that we have with. Auburn Lake Trail, um, it appears to me that in some of the other uh cost of service studies that you have looked at. How the rate could be impacted when there's a drought and the water use actually goes down to the district. Because of external constraints and there might be a potential of a different rate to uh. In the time when we're actually providing less water. To me, one of the things that I'm looking at is um avoiding litigation and that was specifically addressed. In this proposal. Um, also, I'm real impressed with the um P C W rate study. And to me, it's obviously that you're an expert in this field. I mean, with the. Publications and everything that he's done, we're, we're, we're working with a very experienced professional here.
Thank you.
Hello.
We have one more here.
Okay, we will, we'll take comments in a minute, Mister Bro.
Thank you.
I'm just good.
Yeah, so I did like uh, with some of the last studies, we now have someone that has, you know. Help write the standards on how rates those need to be done. That's, that's a huge um plus for us. We have a lot of legwork we've put in over the last few years with a lot of uh. The castle study, the cartograph system, we have the asset management stuff down, we have uh salary surveys, we have a lot of. Thing that uh will make all of the data not only available to you, but to uh, we already have it for customers. The in-person thing was uh very important and we wanna make sure we give our um. Public the time to uh understand what we're doing, what they're finding, you want to have the feedback back and forth, because. That was something uh, we're not gonna limit someone to thirty seconds and write something on paper, because that was. Something that was done to pass, so uh we wanna make sure that the public workshops and outreach are very important. Uh, one of the things is we do have the different systems, so just to make sure that when we're uh working on it, that we really have, right? This is the, the A L T zone that we work on, the non-C D S and C D S fraction. The irrigation part and the treated water part, so we have all of those kind of uh separate kind of systems and make that impact and. I like the fact that we're looking at cost of service and we're looking at what the uh fixed cost may be, so we can have uh. All of those inputs on the things that we're looking for.
Okay, I'm last, um. Yeah, the one thing with the other rate study, when they had their public outreach uh, uh contractor couldn't even. Respond to what certain acronyms that he was uh, just speaking to. Yeah, C D S, not C D C. Um, and so that was, you know, I was public then and I was just. Getting so irritated listening to that man speak because they didn't know what he was talking about. Uh, the only thing I didn't see a lot of information on was um. Experienced doing the irrigation side of, of um the rate study, um, the last. The last rate study sort of uh. Really kind of threw everything into the cost of irrigation and, and. The numbers that were going, I can't remember, what did we start with? A twenty or thirty percent rate hike to begin with? And it was supposed to be ten or fifteen percent the next year. It was just outrageous and it was. Uh, the numbers that they were using were basing it on the full line to uh. Maintain not just the little legs that go off. You know, cause we have water coming down into treatment plants that runs all the time. While before that, you know. That's something that runs all the time, so why is irrigation paying for that bill? And that's kind of what was in the old study. Um, and the only other thing that I have. Uh, have had a question on the whole time is who votes for this? Because basically they had a, a vote. Uh, the little card went to a homeowner or a renter or whoever and they didn't really. Um, this, discern who is the legal person that could vote. And that was one big question that came up at the last rate study that I saw was. A renter would vote, a landowner would vote, but who really was the one who was supposed to be voting? Um, and then it was, of course, that, I always hated that where you voted, if you, if you didn't vote, that was a yes. If you voted no, then you actually got a no. Um, but that, I know I've heard later was how the system.
That's how state law is, yeah.
I know, but I learned that, like I said, I learned that's how it is, but it.
Right.
Kinda irritates the crap out of me, but um, yeah, so that's the only thing is uh. To have that interaction with you, so we make sure we get everything covered um. Of, of numbers, so the numbers are actually real and not kind of fabricated and I, and, and when it came, well, okay. Whatever you wanna use, inflated or fabricated, but it was a public, you know, perception and it was kind of not done well. Um, so.
Yeah, unfortunately, and now we didn't get what we paid for.
Yeah, I'm kidding. I mean, the guy didn't even know what R W A was and he was flopping around R W A and I was like. Somebody said, what does that mean?
It was free.
Yeah, whatever.
Thank you. Um, the only question that I think that I have left or commented after. The other directors was, uh, I know if you didn't vote, it was a yes, at the very least, we could let the. The, the rate player know that a no vote is a yes.
We will be.
We will be. And uh, I think when you mentioned who votes.
Yeah, who votes? The property, the person that owns the property or the person that has the bill?
Yeah, and I wasn't clear on what if you own more than one property, how many votes do you get? Uh, I wasn't. I wasn't sure if that was, you only get one vote or you get multiple votes.
That'd be something, frankly.
Yeah, I mean, basically the rule is, um, only one pro- protest is counted per parcel. So protest may be submitted by a property owner or by, or by a tenant that's directly liable for payment. Um, and even in a multifamily, if you get multi- multiple, for example, protests, it's only counted as one. So if you had multiple tenants or whatever. One per parcel, so it could be the, yeah.
So, yeah, if you own three parcels, you get three votes.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, you have three accounts, three accounts, yeah.
They do have an account.
Yeah, I, I thought there might have been a question or only one, somebody complained, right? Uh, that's the only comment or question I had. Public comment, period is open.
Well, it's actually not a vote, it's a protest.
Protest, yeah.
So you have to vote, no, you know.
Correct.
It's actually a protest. So are you gonna send out an envelope and a, uh, protest form?
Oh.
Probably not.
Probably not.
What I am upset about is how the procedure of this was done. And then the RFP was ran through in twenty-two days. Most RFPs go for sixty days. You wait a year and a half to do a rate study or RFP and it's twenty-two days and it's done. So he does that, you know, I acknowledge he does have the knowledge, but you need to be a little bit more transparent with this whole process. Because this is ridiculous because I asked in December, when are you going to be doing it? Oh, we're getting there. So it needs to be more, and these things should have been in the meeting packet and then, and they weren't. These both, the RFP and the bid, and it wasn't. So can you please put it on the website?
As soon as we approve it, it will be put on the website.
Mr., Mr. Dow.
Yeah. Steve Dow. Hey, Sanjay. Uh, this might sound like a broken record to you guys, but my record is not broken. This is about raising the rate. We, the customers, are suffering the effects of this massive inflation with the cost of all goods and services are increasing daily with no end in sight. We're hurting out here. Majority of the customers retired or close to retirement on fixed incomes close to the poverty level in this community. We are strapped and cannot afford the rate increase. If you push for a rate increase, we will resist. And you know I will. I'll be out there. So make it, make it decent, make it, we can afford it. And we'll be with you. But if it's too much, if it's at five percent every year, five years, we won't go for it. We're gonna fight. So that's my statement. Thank you.
Sounds remarkably like the last one you did.
You'll start a broken record.
I ask you to be open-minded with us and listen to the whole presentation about how much things cost us as well.
Yeah.
Because inflation hits both sides.
All right, some, you both have a comment? Mr. Pro, do you have a comment or question?
I do. Can you hear me okay?
Uh, loud and clear.
Um, I would like to find out if this gentleman is aware of the conditions of the last settlement agreement between, uh, the citizens and GDPUD.
I was, I was, and this is, it's actually related from this item, RFP.
Yeah, um, how is this, Mr. Pro, related to the item on the agenda right now? Regarding the RFP for?
The way I look at it, that until the agreement that GDPUD made with the citizens of Georgetown to re, to get to gain a release from the last lawsuit, until that issue is settled, I think you would be leaving yourself open to a possible injunction to stop everything until those issues are solved. If this gentleman goes in and you guys as a board agree to give him money to do a study and you're not even gonna use any of the information that you are mandated by your own signature of to do, you put the whole district in great dis- jeopardy. And I think that has to be straightened out first. I think this gentleman needs to know what the costs are on that because in my humble opinion, the rates, the rates that you're using now are inflated. You're using monies that are not legally approved, in my opinion. And that if you go ahead with this at this time, without factoring in what you were supposed to do as a board, that you put great umbrance upon the district of having possible large financial impacts.
Mr. Paul duly noted. Thank you for that input, um.
You still didn't give me an answer as to the gentleman knowing about the settlement agreement.
I don't think you.
Yeah, I don't, just thank you. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Pro.
I'm not done yet.
We have one minute left, Mr. Pro.
Do you have something relevant to this?
Of it, I don't know why you're trying to say that it's not relevant.
One, one minute, sir. One more, go ahead, please.
When do he, I, you've got my comments. If you're gonna try and blow me off, you're putting the district in a great deal of jeopardy. And I will not be responsible for it because you have been given fair warning. You've been asked nicely, you've been asked numerous times, and yet you're proposing to, I think, raise the rates again. Is that the intention?
We're doing a study to determine if rates need to be raised and they're gonna justify it either way through the data that we provide. So.
Yes, you did, you did that once before. You made, your board made an obligation to the citizens of Georgetown to do numerous.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pro. We, the three minutes, uh, thank you very much for input. The data, your, your input's been noted and we are duly notified. So, thank you very much. Public comment portion's closed for a time.
So I did have some comments. So on the RFP issue, I mean, that was something I always do and make sure that we have the RFPs on the website. And I know, um, the RFPs are up on BitNet, but it does require, uh,
Yeah, well, we'll make sure we post the actual bit. I, I it, it, you have to, you have to, so we're just gonna post them on the website from now on.
Like you used to do.
Really?
Yeah, so it's, 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 it's free if you, if you just want this district, but just to, to be transparent.
Yeah, when I try to do it, it's a registered thing and even, even that is a step above having the public.
So we will, we will update that policy and we will take care of posting all bids on that same website, so.
Okay. So, any, based on public input, which is now closed, any director comment or questions before motions made? May I get a motion?
My move that, uh, we adopt the resolution to have, uh, professional services agreement with water resources and conduct a cost of service analysis in an amount not to exceed a hundred and five thousand dollars.
Can we get a second?
You slipped it before I did.
So we get a second from all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? None opposed, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you for joining us, Sanjay.
Thank you. I love working with you all. Take care.
Yes, sir.
Action items, D, consider section, selection of water resource economics for no, that's what we just did. Consider, okay, consider selection of waters. Yeah. Yeah, it's under twice.
Just D, it's number D, letter D.
Yeah, that was deep.
Nomination of.
Yeah, right. That was wrong. Thank you. Consider selection of water resources. What?
Nomination of General Manager Nicholas Snyder to California Special District Association, B S D A Board of Director, seat A. Any, any.
This was an easy one, I hope. Uh, but. Uh, I just, I would like your, your nomination to allow me to it, it, it's actually a nomination, endorsement, yeah, whatever. It's actually, you have to nominate me as a, as a resolution to seek a seat on the C S D A board. I tried last year, uh, I didn't have a whole lot of name recognition up in this area yet, so I, I got some votes, not enough votes. Um, I'm gonna keep trying until I get on. This is something that I, I, I feel like we can gain a lot from. I've actually recently been placed on the Legislative Committee. I'm on the Fiscal Committee, so I'm pretty involved with C S D A. They're a great little agency that we, uh, we work with. So I, I'm just hoping to, to kind of input so that I can bring some more, uh, value back in the district.
Open this up to discussion from board members or questions?
California Special Districts Association is a good agency that works with it, uh, helps all of the stuff for special districts. We know we have someone who, uh, who has reached out to some of us, uh, who is our representative, a past board member, so I'm I am, uh, in favor of, uh, having one of our agency be, uh, represented on C S D A.
And if I could just add one more thing, I, I part of the C S, I actually, uh, received a scholarship to go to the GM Summit, so we went to pay for that through C S D A, so yay.
Uh, my first year, I got scholarship to do the, uh, C S D A board stuff and, uh, they do offer scholarships. So if anybody wants to go to the C S D A board training, I have them at home.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I wanted that. Yeah, where is it this year?
San Diego.
Board trains, it might be, I don't know. Did it say you?
Yeah, it's a Tahoe name.
No, I believe you.
C S D A, uh, rep, uh.
Oh, yeah, well, you're a friend, you're a friend, you're, you're best friend.
Okay. Um, may I get a motion? Oh, wait, public, yes. Public comment or questions or anything concerning Nicholas and his nomination for this? Close for public comment? Somebody like to nominate, make a motion to nominate?
I make a motion to nominate Nick.
Second?
I'll second it.
Motion seconded by Director Seaman, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Let's go to this one, yeah. Okay, consider adoption policy twenty-three thirty inclement weather.
So this, uh, policy is, uh, we're calling, we're calling it the inclement weather policy and uh, what we're trying to do is just give some leeway to the district in the interest of safety for both customers and staff. Um, when there is a potential for snow or other mitigating factors that we can notify the public, that we can, you know, uh, have a way to either open the office a little bit later, or if we have to close for the day, that it's not gonna be detrimental to the district. We have, um, instituted a policy of uh, notifying, uh, Facebook if one of these inclement weather, if we, if we see that there may be a need for one of these inclement weather warnings or to be able to close the office for a few hours here or there. Uh, haven't had to use it this year. Probably should have used it last year once or twice when we had some of those big snowstorms. So I would say this is a very limited use policy, but just something we wanted to have in place so that it is transparent that if we have to close, it, it's why we have to close. Um, if there is any questions, I know this is something that, uh, Ms. Olson, um, uh, did a lot of research on, put together, and, uh, the Policy Committee also may want to weigh in as well. Yes, sir. Well, I guess, go.
No, go ahead, Director.
I remember, are you surprised?
No, no, you have had questions every time, so it does not surprise me.
I didn't ask it, I bit my tongue on, on, I was gonna ask for your qualifications and all that, and I thought I would have got flapped silly. All right, I got a question on page one of two of the policy and it says, uh, uh, that employees, uh, can decide on, uh, whether the weather is too inclement for them to come to work.
Yeah, so it is, it is their, their discretion. However, they would have to use time so that they don't get it for free. We're not like saying, oh, yes, great. They would have sick time or vacation time, you know. And, and I think that is to be, for example, we have people that live further up the hill.
Yeah.
Um, and so there are times when they, they can't make it down. And so if they, if their discretion is that they wanna take the day off because they don't feel it's safe, then they can, but it is on them to.
Yeah, okay, well, that was, that was a clarification, because I.
Yeah, so that plays into this administrative leave act. Um, so we are obligated to pay if we close the district. But if they self-elect and we're still open, then that's where that comes in.
Okay, perfect.
Or they have to get permission to work from home, right?
Yeah, and, and if there are certain positions that may have position, permission to work from home, um, obviously, the girls in the front, it's more difficult because they have to answer phones and stuff like that, but you know, if there is, if there is a, uh, an ability to work from home, then, then that is something that we can't afford on a limited, very, very, very limited basis.
Four hours' pay.
Okay.
It's a close, yeah. Look, a couple of comments. I just wanted to be sure that on the second, uh, line of page one of two is the um, the ad hoc police committee?
So that was correct.
We caught that, yeah.
And also, it's. I'd like to raise the issue of including language something that the, the decision will include considering, in, 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 including the decision regarding inclement weather can include if the local school district is closed for inclement weather.
No, I don't wanna tie it to anybody else. I, 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 I guess maybe clarify your, your, your question. I'm not trying.
Include, not will, but if the school district.
It may.
Then that'll, that'll help. Include if, if this district.
Oh, Director Seaman.
Uh, the only problem with that is we are a utility, uh, so the school has a lot more leeway of not of, of closing down. We have to keep working.
It's really your, I mean, the, it makes a decision there as superintendent and that's not, probably not in the best interest of the decision.
Yeah, I would, uh, yeah, give power to district, uh, another district the opportunity to decide what our district would.
Yeah, I'm not saying.
No, but I mean, by putting in the school district would give, uh, give that ability to a different.
I would say we could weigh that in our decision, but I still wouldn't necessarily wanna tie that in a policy. But I, I, obviously, I hear what you're saying, that, that's, it's a resource to look at.
Yeah, and it's a safety. That's all I commented.
And we know if a school district's closed, we may currently have employees who have children in the school district, then they end up.
Then that would be their discretion to stay.
Public comment?
Oh, is it just the inclement weather, not fires? And because we had an incident where mosquito fire where they were off a weed and they weren't supposed to get eight gallons.
Emergency is a different.
Hey, quit it, weather.
Yeah.
Because what nurses call it in.
Right.
Close public comments. They get a motion?
Also do accept the following.
Seconded by?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Let's see. Adoption, there are, where you. Public hearing.
And five.
Okay. Possible action, introduce resolution twenty-twenty-four adopting district service charges for requests outside of cost of service. First reading and receive public comment.
Just one of those things you gotta do, a gavel.
Yeah, so you get, listen to a public hearing at, uh, I've got six twenty-eight.
Okay, I will now open. public hearing period. And then, and members of the public would like to deliver a comment?
So we have to just read the title first. Um, this is to consider district implementation of various service charges. Um, we, we call the service charges within the resolution, so you can open it for public comment.
Now open for public comments.
Which number is it?
It's the, uh, public hearing number nine.
Just nine.
Okay, so we're retraining this again? Eight, nine. I don't have any troubles with the, um, guest rows and stuff like that. It's other, it's the reading of the meter. Like in my instance, I needed a reading of my meter and I wouldn't want to be charged fifty-six dollars for that. I don't think, I think that one should be taken off. But do you charge now to open a water meter? There are charge?
Oh, opening, well, what do you mean by?
Start, start service including service?
Yes.
And what's the charge right now?
Well, it kind of varies depending on if it's a near service connection, you know?
Well, yeah, that's different. But if somebody may sells a house.
Oh, no, 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 no. Sorry, sorry. No, 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 we don't. I, I, I apologize. We do not charge for that. I thought you were talking about, that's a whole new customer. If someone leaves, we do not charge.
So this charging here for fifty-six dollars was complex.
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry, yes, the um, yeah, the run digit does have an error, um, because we had the discussion a year ago. It was, yeah, we were gonna AMR download, but the staff report has it in there. It's just, yeah, so it's, it's mainly for, um, turn off, turn ons, escrow. So say so when you have a service installed at your house, you, we, we installed a meter, um, there's a gate valve there. It's a customer responsibility to maintain that gate valve. We get calls all the time where there, you know, someone said, oh, I have like any of the water turned off. Well, it's like, well, they really need to maintain their system.
They need to turn off so they can do something in there?
Yes.
Oh, they don't know where their turnout?
Or they don't maintain it where it doesn't work anymore.
So that's what you're talking about. That's turning, okay, well, that.
So we're, so we're constantly having to go out and just turn the water on and off. At our, at our, our
But they need to be putting in a new turn off and, or they may be putting in a new pressure regulator or something.
Yeah, or you gotta leave from doing something. Okay, so you're gonna take away the ninety-day meter.
Yeah, and it should be It's in the staff report.
Well, yeah, but it's on there for a charge. Yeah, and that was an error.
Bottom paragraph on the staff report says not proposed to do any more downloads of, down with a service charge.
Even though it says ninety-day meter, data download log?
That was, all that was, was just rep, showing a representation. I was giving more data to, you know, what it takes to go out to someone's house. That's all I was doing there.
So when you sent new data, you got it off the computer?
Well, someone still went out there.
Even though you read every month?
Yeah, to get a ninety, to actually do a download is different than a, a snapshot reading.
So you wanna keep this ninety days in here? Is that what we're doing? You're taking it down? Okay, then I'm okay.
I would just recommend if you move, if you move to adopt the reso, you could just adopt a reso with resident staff to make the make clear that the P schedule is based upon those two and not the metering news.
This'll come back in, in thirty days as it's public hearing. We'll be on the consent calendar next time. So if we need to make adjustments, we can make adjustments before it comes back.
Yeah.
I have a question about how this all came, came to be. Is this? I, I thought this was something that we had
Point of order. It's still public hearing, so we don't have to talk until the public's finished.
Yeah, Mister Dunn.
Is there any more public comment? Yeah, he has to close. You guys, you guys actually
It's now closed for the public comment. Go ahead.
Six-thirty-three.
Six-thirty-three. Thank you.
Does something like this have to be, uh, approved by the board? And did we approve it? It rings a bell that I wanted
That's over here.
What happened, it came to us before and we asked for all of the data to, uh, so we knew exactly how much it costs.
You asked us to go back and do a years' look at how much these actual services cost. And so that's what this is showing you in the cartograph, how much they cost.
Oh, so so we don't have to approve this first and then it goes to public hearing. We could do it all at once, too.
Uh, so, public hearing is, we have now, once you, uh, basically open this up, you have thirty days to re- accept comments and, and to let this be in the ethers of the public. And if anybody comes in, then we would read comments or we would address those comments in, as, as, as part of what is here. At the next board meeting, it will be on consent calendar as it's, the thirty-day window is over. And so if you either approve it, or if it's got comments, then we, we pull it and we have an item to discuss whether or not we wanna do it or not.
That makes sense. Backwards from what we've always done it.
Yeah, I, I don't know if we've always were handling public hearing the right way. We have got some legal advice on how to do this the correct way, and so now we're doing it legally.
Okay, um. I guess I'm I'm kind of confused because I took this to be something totally different and didn't familiarize myself with it, but I can I can raise a stink at the next meeting, right?
You can, or you can, we can talk offline if you want.
Well, I wanna study it. I'm gonna study it some more. I thought this, because I know it rang about, thought it was something we already approved. And then, then we were just going through the public hearing part. But now I'm seeing that, that that's not the case.
So, so, yeah, basically what today you, um, are, would approve is opening the window, open a thirty-day window. So there's still time. This is, nothing is happening today. We actually, we have to open a thirty-day window, and then when we come back at the next meeting, you approve it. And then it opens another thirty-day window where we have to post it, because this is becoming like an ordinance for the district. So it's actually sixty days before any of this hits.
All right.
Yeah, what happened last time, Derek, the Thornburg was, there were numbers and we wanted to know the justification of the numbers for the service charges. And it's actually come down lower than what was initially, um.
So where is that information?
It's not here. What it was, is it here what we requested before?
What information?
It shows the original proposed amount. It's not there. All this is, all it said, Nick, we, we looked at in two thousand twenty-three, a year ago. Collected more data.
Yeah.
Now we came back.
I'll, I'll make an example. I think one of the things we had was two hundred eighty-five dollars or
It was, it was
Yeah, it was a lot higher. Everything came down to where it was today.
So compared to, compared to the other districts, we're a lot lower.
And we have the cartograph and it said we have the system, so let's use the system to find out how many services calls we do and we'll be able to get a good justification of the cost that I think that is the
Well, I'll look at this.
Sounds like we're consistent with what we do. Get the data, we'll make a decision.
Point of order. Can we go, uh, one at a time? Because I've been waiting for a while and you guys have stopped over the top of me.
Okay, I didn't see you're getting it up.
Neither.
Any more in your face? It's a fucking jab. Um, so is this also including, uh, uh, irrigation?
Yes, it would include irrigation, yeah.
So if I had a break like what I did last year and I called, that, hey, I need my water shut off. Uh, because there's nowhere, there, nowhere that line can be shut off. Is that different than?
It's no different because you still have a shut off.
You, you're shutting me off.
We have your own, you control your own system, though. We, we, we leave at that valve or we like do a lockup or something like that. We gotta go past that.
No, from that point where you're opening and closing it there is however many hundred feet, hundreds of feet.
In your case, not from the top. I'm talking, uh, down, down the bottom there. It actually along, along the road that that's where it began. Not way up top.
No, no.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, no, no. It's a, it's in that guy's property where all those boxes are.
Yeah.
So that's why I'm wondering, is it gonna be probably a case by case then?
Because this is, I, I, I would say for egregious
Okay.
Use, yeah, I, I mean, if if we have to come out and turn off and, and we can turn it back on and it's not this is when people are coming all the time. We have people that do this regularly. Turn it off, turn it on, turn it off, turn it on. Because we wanna do this. And, uh, we're trying to be running all over the district for this.
Okay. Director Saunders?
Yeah, I would just like to, uh, give staff direction that we remove the ninety-day meter, data download from. So that's
You know, I also recommend some activation, deactivation. Those are specific type things that started a service or
So I don't think we take a vote now. We just, um, close everything and we move on to the next item. And
Board member request?
Whoever's next.
Yeah, that's it.
I'm looking at it right now.
Do I see it, uh, or hand up? Or hand out?
I have a board member request. This is month, um, meaning three, I'm requesting that we get an RFP for the lab charges. Month three.
And I was just, I'm just gonna continue. We, it's not that we're just putting this off. We are still working on, um, figuring this out. So I will give direction to get an RFP together.
Yeah, we will, yeah.
We probably can do this through the U P, uh, uh.
Uh, what's the service really? I mean, we, we, we can look into it and see.
I think, I think it's, I think there might be
It's been over a year and then I officially requested January, February, and that mark.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get something through the cup. We may not have it next month, but we will, I will give you an update as to what our process is.
You're violating our policy.
We'll, we'll hit it on our, just go through. I, we, we may or may not be able to do that, but I'm sure that we have vendors through Aqua or other people that we can
We are the police.
Director Sonia?
I was just, uh, inquiring it if you were interested in the COF board because that would need to be done by, uh,
I'm working on other, uh, agencies to get free recommendations.
All right, thank you. At this time, um, I'd like to get a motion.
RFP for the lab services.
No, dude. But now that you've asked me, I'll get it on there.
That's why I did it, to help her out.
Is that a second?
She says, she's, I can't get it done. And this is, I got it.
That's a second, second motion.
Now you're maybe look bad because it gets on there.
We'll know tomorrow now. No worries.
Thank you.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Meeting adjourned. It's now six forty P M.